Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting into order. We're going to start with the flag salute, please. Let's see. Mrs. Dancher, would you like to... Let's see. Mr. Dr. Galen, would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please? Thank you.
We can hear you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Galen. Okay. I'd like to bring to order the regular Board of Education meeting on March 10th to 20... March 10th to 2020. And we are starting about... There's a glare. Five ten in the afternoon. Report from closed session. Dr. Bregge.
During closed session, the Board of Education considered and voted to approve, five to zero, the third permit to enter property with MTA. And the Board has voted, five to zero, to approve the resolution 2019, 2020, 018, to release and reassign a certificated administrator employee NF 5565884.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. At this moment, we'd like to move in to agenda hearing period.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I think that's after...
Can I second?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Yes, Mr. Margot. Thank you. Who seconded, please?
No.
Mr. Spitz. Any... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move to public hearing. At this point, because there are so many speakers who have requested to speak before the Board, I'm going to restrict it to two minutes. And so if I call your name, please approach. And we will start now with Mr. Smith going first. And the next person is going to be, just so that you know, Mr. Federman and then Corinne Carlson. So just get ready. That'll be the order, and then I'll announce the next three speakers. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to protest the Board's resolution to reduce staffing at PHUSD. Not only do I protest the decisions you've made, I'm also here to protest the way in which you've done it. First, I can see the headline now. Beverly Hills School District Eliminates Elementary Music Program. And that's exactly what you're doing. We finally have a clear pathway of instruction for instrumental music from the elementary school through to the new middle school and into the high school. Just as we get it, however, you've decided to eliminate its foundation in the elementary schools. Of course, it wasn't a perfect program this first year, but that's not because of the teachers you've now pink slipped. The program was designed without any input from the music teachers in the district. And if we'd been asked, we could have told you that small groups of similar instruments, like brass and woodwind instruments, is a way to teach elementary students. I myself taught in the school district for 10 years using that model, and it was very effective. Instead of eliminating the program, the two jobs that go with it, why not work with your very capable music staff and create a more effective program to enhance our music program rather than delete from it? Next, in science, too, I fear you're making some very grave decisions. At the high school, the robotics program is doing quite well, and awesome things are happening there. What will happen next year when there are fewer life science classes for students to choose from if you go ahead with this riff? At BV Middle School, you are dropping a teacher who has proven to be a very valuable asset to PHUSD. She has helped in the adoption of textbooks and runs our seventh-grade outdoor ed trip. Imagine, if you will, doing all that work, returning from coordinating that trip, taking over 160 seventh-grade students, and getting riffed the next day. And that's exactly what has happened. Seems to me you're choosing very short-term savings over long-term goals. Think how many teachers are working six-fifths and even one-seventh-fifth position? Teachers have to agree to these overages. And what will you decide if they decide not to in the future? At the same time, we're expecting the middle school to increase. California is warning that the pool of highly qualified teachers will decrease. You should be working with principals, department chairs, and teachers on the front lines in order to come up with creative solutions in staffing to programming instead of making top-down decisions from behind closed doors at the district office. Finally, today is Tuesday. Spring break starts Friday. Any teacher who receives a written riff will have essentially two days to request a hearing instead of seven days he would normally receive. I ask that the district at least show some compassion and give an extension to teachers facing riffs to submit their paperwork until after spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Federman, please. And then Corinne Carlson. Is Corinne Carlson here? Thank you.
Mr. Terranova is seating in her time.
Okay. Who has... I'm sorry. You have seated time from who?
Ms. Terranova.
Ms. Terranova. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mike Federman. I'm visual arts chair at the high school. I'm here tonight representing the Visual and Performing Arts Department specifically to address the cutting of, now it seems, more than just the two FTE elementary positions, but also a middle school position. It's concerning that the removal of these positions will completely sever pathways that the district office was so proud of, a pathway which isn't even a year old yet. Data shows that early exposure in formative years with performing arts is essential. Students who are immersed in early development... Immerse early, develop deep and meaningful understanding of the content result in more confident students and a more sophisticated development in the spatial-temporal reasoning parts of the brain. The tactile nature of the instrument, analysis, and listening to sound dynamic, instrument identification, and the abstract nature of music notation as a representation of sound and timing, which are all part and parcel in the nurturing critical reasoning and thinking skills in our students. If it is the district's intent to remove music education at this level, it would seem short-sighted. To begin a new program, but then remove it merely a year later without sufficient data on its progress and effectiveness is irresponsible. Furthermore, curricular development in response to new programming cannot occur unless multiple years are allowed to matriculate and instructional methods are developed, evolved, and evaluated. It's worth noting that during the planning process of reconfiguration, current teachers offered their expertise and advice. The only outreach from the district office was an email. There was never a whole district face-to-face meeting which included teachers and site or district administration to collaborate and plan the implementation of new programming. This is not the first instance where a negation of meaningful resources within our content area specialists has occurred in creating existing coursework or in hiring of new teachers within the Visual and Performing Arts or placing teachers we currently have into VAPA classes without VAPA credentialing. The last item puts the district out of compliance. Meaningful collaboration without established... Sorry. Meaningful collaboration with established specialist staffing not only fosters goodwill, but it also creates clarity in how newly implemented coursework fits into the current curriculum, what and how meaningful branches of that curriculum should or could be, and who best fits the criteria, certification, and experience to teach those courses. In this light, I urge you to begin a meaningful dialogue with, in this case, the performing arts staff to seek to make the most of your current staffing and their expertise and experience so that PHUSD stays on its path to creating a robust, holistic, competitive, and enriching musical program, one that becomes a beacon to prospective families. You have extremely talented, award-winning, skillful, and expert personnel. I strongly ask the district not to make any further changes when we are now finally leaving the wake of massive change behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Federman. Ms. Carlson.
Dear Superintendent Bregge, Board members, and district administrators, what are the implications of reducing the French program from eight classes to five? Number one, this would entail larger classes. There is no pedagogical benefit to having larger classes, least of which in a foreign language class where verbal communication is at the very core of language teaching methodology. It is to be noted that higher-powered universities, for example Ivy Leagues, not only would like to see more years of a foreign language, many also would show a notable preference to see a foreign language other than Spanish. French is perceived to be more rigorous and more difficult, and those students who could advance through to the higher levels are better equipped to compete with peers, especially coming from private schools where foreign language programs are still strong. Per our state content standards, the curriculum in French is rigorous from the beginning levels. The material is challenging, especially in the first two or three very crucial foundational years. Bigger classes puts these students at a disadvantage. Two, this would entail three levels of combined honors and regular French classes. For a district that prides itself for the importance it puts on meeting students' needs above all, i.e. prioritizing differentiating in terms of methodology and in terms of learning styles and assessments, this is counterproductive. Any and every teacher will tell you that there is an enormous difference between honors and regular classes, and neither group benefits from being together in the same class, especially in a language that is so challenging comparatively. On a personal note, I have taught in this district since 1990. I've been teaching at the high school for the past 23 years and chair of the Foreign Language Department for close to 20. We've been able to maintain a successful French program in all these years. Our students have won numerous awards on the National French Contest, the only French competition of its kind, on average 25 to 55 students in the top-10 rankings regionally and nationally. We've been putting on our French cabaret event for the last 20 years with 200 to 300 parents and community members attending, including the French consul and vice consul. We've had more students in our French AP class than in the Spanish AP class, some years almost twice as many for many years, even though the difference in enrollment Spanish to French is approximately four or five to one. What we are doing is obviously working. The French... Is that it? That's it.
Thank you.
Merci.
For your time. Jimmy Wallet, Mia Elkens... Can't read this, sorry. Or Emkins? I'm not sure. And Danielle Raskin? Okay. So no Jimmy Wallet. Mia... Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mia Elkens. I am a sophomore at Beverly Hills High School right now, and the environmental science and just biology classes in general have personally helped me. I struggle with mental health, PTSD, social anxiety, and general anxiety, as well as depression. So it's personally really hard for me to come up here and speak, but I think that what the Board is trying to change is right. I know last year I had a near fatal suicide attempt, and the only teacher that I had that was willing to work with me was John Castle in helping me rebound from my near fatal suicide attempt. I got put into residential treatment for 45 days, and the only teacher that was willing to work with my IEP and actually help me was in the Science Department. So I would personally like to see the Science Department stay the exact way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raskin. Alex McDermott, Ella Cox, and Oliver Booth.
Good evening. My name is Alex McDermott. I've been a member of Team Mortork for the past four years and served on the leadership board for the last three. Our Team Mortork is a school robotics team affiliated with the Greater Worldwide FIRST organization. I'm a firm believer that our FIRST robotics team is one of the most valuable programs this high school offers in all categories: leadership skills, four-year college attendance, hands-on experience, creative thinking, community impact, career placement, and more. FIRST's impact studies have shown that 89% of FIRST alumni declare a major in a STEM field, and 70% will declare a major specifically in engineering or computer science. Comparison groups yielded results of 59% and 25% respectively. Female alumni of FIRST are 3.7 times more likely to take coursework in engineering and 5.3 times more likely to take coursework in computer science than their male counterparts. As a comparison to other highly-funded programs at our school, only 6% of high school athletes will move into NCAA sports, and just 2% of those college athletes will go pro. You should want our school to have a world-class team, and such a designation is not out of reach. But instead of standing here asking you to increase our funding so we can spend less time looking for sponsors and more time spreading STEM to the community, or to provide better maintenance to our machine shop so that flooding could get fixed in less than two months and we could rely on our machines to work throughout the season? Instead of asking you to reexamine the high school modernization plans to include space for a practice field so we have master drivers and master robots? We're considering bringing FIRST Lego League and FIRST Lego League Junior to the elementary schools and FIRST Tech Challenge to the middle school so we have a pipeline into high school robotics and a greater chance of winning business awards that qualify our team for world championships. I'm asking you to allow us to keep the minimum we already have. Let's keep a teacher with a vision for the future of our team and school who adds hours and hours onto his normal teaching job to supervise us in the shop, takes care of administrative needs, and carries over institutional knowledge from year to year. Make a choice to prioritize your students, and in doing so, don't lay off Mr. Castle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. So I really... On behalf of the Board, we really do appreciate everyone here tonight, and I think your comments are valuable for us to hear. However, I'm going to ask that you please refrain from clapping because it does bite into the time that I'm trying to cede to all of you. Thank you. Ella Cox, please. And Oliver Booth. And then Eva Dinesh.
Good evening. My name is Ella Cox, and I'm the safety captain of Team 1515. During my two years on Mortork and one year of Skills USA, I've had the pleasure of meeting all these incredible people surrounding me, and especially Mr. Castle. Most people only hear about the awards we win, but sadly know little about what we do. Through all our struggles and successes of build season, we've grown stronger and have become one big family with Mr. Castle leading the way. Mr. Castle embodies everything FIRST is about and does everything he can to ensure our success, and for that, I'll always be grateful. No matter what happens or how I feel, I know I can always talk to him, and this not only implies to the members of the team but everybody at the school. Just the thought that Mr. Castle wouldn't be with us next year hurts us all very deeply. Without him, we would have a drastically decline in our performance next year, but more importantly, we would have lost the biggest part of this team, and that is something nobody could replace. Thank you.
Eva Dinesh and Oliver Booth. Or Oliver Booth first, and then Eva Dinesh.
Hi. I'm Oliver Booth. I've been on Mortork for four years. This is my freshman year. Most exciting thing, thought of the summer before freshman year, was participating in robotics. You know, I was a big fan of building robots. It's been a dream of mine since I was four years old watching Star Wars, and finally I had the actual experience to actually do it in real life. And then what I actually experienced that year was sheer disappointment. First off, the team was disorganized with a teacher who didn't really care about the team, and rather was only there to chaperone the students in the woodshop, which itself was covered in dust and featured archaic machines and projects from a shop class that didn't exist in decades. But the lack of resources led to the wide-eyed freshman like me to not have the experience to work on the robot, instead relegating us to toil with mundane tasks. The most important task I had that year was grabbing a pen out of other things, but it was unfair and left a sour taste in my mouth. But then came Mr. Castle. Unlike the former teacher, he actually had compassion for the team, and he started with the purchasing of new machines that we desperately needed, as well as reorganization of the woodshop. As a sophomore and junior, I actually got to work on the robot, increasing not only my practical skills in cutting, building, designing, and things for engineering, but also my relationship with the rest of the team. Creating a bond with the other members still lasts to this day. But, you know, we actually made it in my sophomore year to world championships. And, you know, now a lot of people, you know, leaders actually listen to my ideas and opinions, and robotics was good. I actually got to build robots like what I wanted to do. But I believe Mr. Castle's absence in robotics will undoubtedly lessen the good impact he's made in the past three years of the program. And without him, the team might devolve into the unsuccessful, low-energy program that existed when I first came. And Mr. Castle's helped me in robotics a lot. He was there when my dad passed, and he was there when robotics was at my lowest, it's lowest, and I was at my lowest. And I think without him, I think robotics will devolve into something not as good as it was now.
Okay. Eva Dinesh. Oh. Cindy Dubin, and then Zurabi... I cannot say the last.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Eva Dinesh, and I'm the president of the Business Division of Mortork. I have been on the team for the past four years, and although Mr. Castle is not our business teacher specifically, he leads our entire team and has played an integral role in developing the qualities of myself that I am most proud of. Over the past three years that Mr. Castle has been here, our business division has had a new teacher every year. He has been the one consistency and the force who pushes us to work hard, to be creative, and to be impactful. This year, we did not have a consistent business mentor for the first 12 weeks, so I was left to lead the business students, but I did not feel alone because I knew Mr. Castle was there for me. Mr. Castle instilled in me unparalleled leadership skills. I learned to listen to the input of each and every student, delegate tasks and responsibilities to those eager to grow, and to acknowledge the presence and value of every person. Mr. Castle never let a student leave without a handshake, eye contact, and a thank you for dedicating their time to our team. And even now, Mr. Castle has kept it up, substituting with creative footshakes and innovative elbow taps. The character he has built in each of our team members is beautifully reflected in the award we won just two days ago at the Los Angeles Regional Competition. Along with our robot performing to an incredibly high standard, we were honored with the gracious professionalism award, which recognizes outstanding demonstration of humility, sharing perseverance, and a winning attitude. Every student and parent knows that these characteristics encompass Mr. Castle and everything he stands for. No other teacher is half as dedicated as Mr. Castle is to our mission and our students, and no one will be able to honor our tremendous history and our bright future like Mr. Castle can. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Dubin. Okay. Are both of these seated? Okay. She has seated time by two. Six minutes.
I'm mostly just reading a letter. Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not going to repeat everything. I think you're going to hear from more of the students, and I think that's the most powerful way to just take a minute and check in on one of our most amazing programs. I think it's important to do as we go along and reach different milestones so you have the context in which to make these really difficult decisions that you're making. And I look forward to working with the Board on any creative solution that we can come up with that enables you to go through your process but come out with hopefully a different outcome. Mr. Castle's a rock star, just no other way to put it. Curriculum, he's the most inclusive human being on this campus to the whole school community, to parents, to teachers, to staff. And I know the administration was hoping, is hoping that Mr. Castle will be here as they go through the next few decades of making Beverly number one. Okay. So this is a letter from an alum who lived through the last few years of the program. I'm going to read it really quickly, so my apologies. This letter is to Mr. Castle and anyone is able to read what I have said to him in the robotics program I was in for four years. "At least 1,000 hours of my life have been spent at the woodshop, at competition or something related to robotics. I devoted my time to robotics and I have zero regret. There's one main reason why I was so committed to robotics, because of what I was able to get out of it. I love this program for what it has done for me. Not only did I learn the engineering and machine practice to build a robot, but I learned how to be a leader, how to manage my time, and how to work with others. What may be surprising is that from my first memory is going into the robotics woodshop my freshman year, and all I saw was a bunch of crap everywhere. Throughout build season, I had a lot of fun because of the lack of control that was in the class. We were safe and fine, but I didn't get anything out of it. Two years go by with the same old machines, woodshop, and unorganized program. Our robot wasn't good, and there was no room for growth. We peaked at mediocrity, and I have never seen this before academically because I was in PHUSD since kindergarten. I've been raised to be great, but for the first time, the pieces weren't there to succeed. It wasn't until my junior year that there was a real change in the program. There was structure. Leaders were listened to. Theater 40 was out of our workshop, and we even had new tools. Result? I actually took something away from the class. Human interaction can be difficult, and so can managing a 50- to 60-hour work week. However, I learned how to do it. Now in college, I can say that I use what I learned from robotics more than any other class, more than the vocabulary or US presidents that I learned. These life lessons and habits would not have been taught unless the program was turned around my junior year. What was the only variable that changed, you may ask? It was the person who had the most hands-on with the program, Mr. Castle. Looking back at the adversities we experienced during robotics, all I can think about is Mr. Castle talking to us and getting the team through it. You don't typically see this much passion and persistence for a program that requires so much time. Mr. Castle led by example. A new teacher could have come in and stuck to the status quo, but that is not who he is. I can talk to statistics about the growth of the program, the accolades, but those are just numbers on a piece of paper or metal in a trophy case. What I want to write about is the growth I got from this program because of Mr. Castle. The last two years of robotics are the years that I cherish, and the goals that we accomplished wouldn't have been accomplished without him. He was what the program needed. I'm thankful he dedicated his time to this program to see it and the people involved grow, and I can really see it getting better with Mr. Castle there. This program is special and should be valued. It would be a shame if it went down the drain. Thank you for the memories and pushing me and the program to be better. Stay in touch." So that's just one example. We had alums attend a competition last year and the year before who had been through the program, and their jaws dropped. It dropped at the team spirit being inclusive for our incoming ninth graders. Their jaws dropped at the engineering that was being done. And you're going to hear from some other speakers tonight on that front, but we really were trying to keep the business level up, which historically was our strong suit in robotics and got us to the Nationals while we've been building the engineering program. As a STEM district, I thought that that was our mission, and we've worked hard, all of us have worked hard, to get that going. So we need Mr. Castle to carry the baton until we're number one in the country. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dinesh. Jonah Dinesh, Jacob Geddy.
They seeded their time.
Oh, they did. Okay. Zurabi? Are you ready? And Eli? I think it's Raymer. Eli Raymer, I'm sorry. And Ali? I don't know. Halcrim? I can't... Hakam? Like hacker, almost. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Dear Board members, I'm pretty sure that by now you have gotten a better idea of how Mr. Castle has contributed to the team and understand how passionate the team is to come and present tonight. You have heard many examples and stories about how Mr. Castle promoted student learning, prioritized the team over his free time, and led the team in every step of the way. The obvious question that needs to be asked is why? Why would anyone work so hard to impress and improve some robotics class that no one believed in? Why would anyone put in so much extra effort and work for each student? What is the reason behind his drive to improve the team? Besides the obvious answers that he loves the students and he likes to teach, I was interested to find out what was behind his drive. I asked him this question last year, and the answer seemed pretty simple. Mr. Castle told me that it was the school. He told me about his concerns regarding the district's declining student enrollment and how he's trying to solve the problem with his class. He said, "If we win Worlds, we will have a parade, media coverage, and gain a lot of attention in the city." Castle said that he wants to inspire students to join Beverly Hills High School specifically because of our robotics program. He wants to attract passionate future engineers and maybe even attract some students from private schools, which don't... believed that his dreams extend beyond robotics. The reason why I decided to come here and talk about his goals is to show you that he, like all of you here, cares about the school's well-being. Making Beverly Hills High School known to every future engineer is his passion and drive. And by removing him from the district, you are not only removing the crucial part of our team, but you are also removing an ally of yours as well. Thank you.
Eli Raymer and Ali Hakram. And then Janine Raymer, or Janine, are you speaking? Or you're, I have Will Ferenc. Okay, got it, thank you.
Esteemed board members, my name is Eli Raymer and I'm a current sophomore at Beverly Hills High School who has been on the Mortorq Robotics Team for the past two years. I'm here to tell you that Mr. Castle is one of the greatest assets this school and our district possesses. I was first introduced to him in eighth grade. He created an outreach program that connected interested middle school students with high school robotics mentors in order to compete in the Skills USA Robotics Competition. This program allowed me to meet mentors and now friends who helped me transition into high school. It also gave me the opportunity to compete and eventually get to the state level of that Skills USA Robotics Competition. Then, as I entered high school, I was able to mentor middle school students myself and continue the cycle. Entering a robotics program run by Mr. Castle makes me unable to think of a program under someone else. He has made amazing changes and inspired amazing ideas such as institutionalized knowledge. This is knowledge that will be passed down from one generation to the next, just as I had knowledge passed down to me as an eighth grader that I was then able to pass on the next year. I'd also like to speak to his character. My grandfather passed away relatively recently, and he was the one there who offered his ear and offered anything that I needed. Anytime I needed to talk, he said, "I'll be there for you, just come to my room and let me know." It was something that I really needed and I really appreciated. I'd also like to take a little bit of the end to hand in these letters from fellow students and teammates of mine who were not able to speak tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ali, Ali, and then Will Ferenc. And then after that, we have Isaiah Morris and Cole Summers.
The Beverly Hills High Robotics Team has not only been among the most successful teams in our school, but has also been one of the most competitive robotics team in our region, and as you will soon see, the world stage. We qualified for the world championship for the last two years by winning prestigious awards and pushed through to the quarterfinals of our championship division last year. Never before has the Beverly Hills Robotics Team, or any Beverly Hills sports program or club, been competitive on the world stage. And I'm not here to tell you that Mr. Castle did this on his own, but it is clear that our team would not be in the ranks we're in without him. Robotics and automation are no doubt among the most important fields in our brighter future. In our robotics class, arguably the class that singularly best prepares our future innovators for such careers, is one we should invest in and not cut out. As vice president of Mortorq Robotics, I'm disappointed that the board is willing to save themselves a teacher's paycheck at the expense of the robotics program and the promising future it provided for hundreds of students. To the board, I say this: Good luck finding another qualified individual willing to put in so many hours after school, from 3:00 to 6:00, and occasionally staying until 9:00 for weeks on end. You won't find anyone willing to dedicate so many hours normally spent with their family, but also their full energy and motivation to ensure the success of the team. And believe me, it takes such dedication to yield such results. Thank you.
Will Ferenc.
I believe some other folks have yielded their time to me.
Yes, you have. You have six minutes.
Excellent. I'm Will Ferenc, California professional engineer, license number EE21809. I hope you'll excuse the state of my voice. I was with the team at the regional in El Segundo, and I still haven't fully recovered. I'd like to start by congratulating the district on the remarkable success the robotics team has experienced over the past two years. There are not many teams who have qualified for the world FRC competition two times, let alone two years in a row. I noticed that Mr. Castle's time with the team is highly correlated with that success. Now scientists say correlation does not imply causation. Luckily, as I just mentioned a moment ago, I'm an engineer and not a scientist. I'm going to imply causation. This program will not be the success it is without Mr. Castle. There are a number of students here tonight, and I'm sure that their number alone speaks volumes. I think they've already addressed the student impacts, so I'll focus my time on two other perspectives, those as a hiring manager in the industry and as a staff member in this program and part of the Castle system. First, I would like to share an anecdote about the impact of this program on the students. Part of the reason I'm involved with this program is to influence the candidates available for me to hire in about four years. I'm helping to build the engineers I want to hire. This is the perspective from the other side, as a hiring manager out there in the industry. But don't just take my word for it. Last weekend, I invited the lead digital engineer from ABL out to observe the competition. He was so impressed that he's putting together his paperwork to be a mentor immediately. While I was at the competition, I also ran into the director of digital systems from Northrop Grumman, a director of Vero Space Corporation, and a four-star Air Force general, just to name a few. All of these folks are there because they believe in the outcome of this program has for the students, an outcome that Mr. Castle is making sure BHHS students share. I'm surprised Oliver didn't take a moment to mention that he actually got to give that four-star general a tour of the entire competition at the prodding of Mr. Castle. Mistakes are caused by a lack of experience, and experienced is gained through making mistakes. What Mr. Castle is providing for these students is a platform for the students to make cheap mistakes early on in their careers, enabling them to gain experience even before their first jobs or internships. This is an important capability for the district to retain. My first hire at SpaceX was an alumni of the FRC program. Average candidate for my group, double E, 4-0 from MIT, relevant coursework, not enough practical experience. I was about to pass on the kid, but then I saw FRC scholarship at the bottom of the resume. That was the differentiating factor for me actually to pick up the phone and call him. During the course of the phone interview, the candidate was able to impress me with the depth and breadth of practical knowledge, most of which was starting in the FRC program. I brought him on as an intern, then he came back as another internship, and I brought him back full-time after that. This program offers an unparalleled opportunity to develop practical experience that is valuable in any entrepreneurial or engineering activity. The combination of cooperative and competitive atmosphere, coupled with a restricted timeframe, are in excellent proximity for the engineering industry. The only program I could imagine to match it is an internship at a top-tier engineering company or government lab. Now let me transition to the perspective as a staff member. Castle makes my involvement in this program possible. Castle is the one who brings order out of the chaos and allows the rest of us to do our jobs. By the rest of us, I mean the engineering mentors, the business mentors, the parent committee. Mr. Castle is the center point and ultimately responsible party for the program's success. I think I speak for all the industry mentors when I say I could not provide the constant level of support, coordination, and management that he has provided. Mr. Castle has been able to step in where otherwise there would be a missing link anywhere in the program. Mr. Castle operates an effective system which the students receive responsibility and opportunity, learn technical skills and discipline, and most importantly, how to operate in a modern, technical, cross-functional team. This system emphasizes both individuals and outcomes, gives the older students the opportunity to mentor and train the younger students, and the ability for the students to tailor their role on the team to their interests. Having a couple of engineers show up a couple of weekends out of the year does not produce the results Mr. Castle has demonstrated. That outcome required the careful and concerted effort to develop the curriculum and train the students throughout the whole year, several years in a row. Since my first involvement with the program, the total skill level of the program has increased notably. This is largely because of Castle's tireless efforts. He has been training the students, changing the culture, and most importantly, giving the students a matched pair of opportunity and accountability. He is a man of his word in a way few of us can claim to be, and I think that it is important to have somebody like that at the head of the program. Mr. Castle has been managing complex programs like this for years, and his experience shows. His experience running a ranch for adults with different needs prepared him exceptionally well for this assignment. He has modernized the communication system, trained the students on loadout. He has raised the bar on CAD and machining skills. He coordinates with the students, school, and on purchasing, training, events, and travel every day of the week. Without Mr. Castle's efforts, we would not have a parent committee, feeder programs, or safety training. Allow me to summarize Castle's accomplishments. Demonstrated success on the regional and world stage, improved opportunity and outcomes for the students, modernized communications training and skills, recruitment of parent volunteers, and industry mentors. In closing, let me observe that many of the schools we compete against in this competition are supported by at least one full-time member of staff, and the most successful ones almost always are. I think that there's an opportunity for a creative solution here. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Morris and Cole Summers, Peter, I don't know if that's a C, Lodzulid? Or a C, I don't know if that's a C or an L, I'm sorry. And then Dr. Galen, please, afterwards, okay?
Hello, my name is Isaac Morris, and I am a sophomore in Mr. Castle's class. This is my second year with him, and he's a great teacher who has taken the time to bring me up from an average student to one who's doing much better, all because of him. He makes learning fun, and you don't feel like a student. You feel like a family because he cares. I want him to stay so that other students can have the same experiences I have, and thank you.
Thank you. Cole Summers, Peter, and Dr. Galen.
Hi, my name is Cole Summers, and I am a freshman in Mr. Castle's environmental science class. Mr. Castle has taught me so much, and he's helped me stay interested in all the things we do and learn in environmental, and I really do look forward to, for him to be teaching our class. We as a class do a lot of critical thinking and hands-on activities, like the closed aquatic ecosystem, which is pretty much like an ecosystem in a jar. We put shrimp in it and like designed like a whole like, pretty much like, so the shrimp can survive in like a decent-sized jar. When I wake up in the morning, I usually don't want to get up, but this class pushes me to get ready faster and makes me want to come to school. And he actually, he actually cares about you and will help you as much as he can when you ask, and I'm really looking forward to hopefully having him next year in biology. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Peter, Dr. Galen, and then Evan Katz.
I'm here to talk today about how Mr. Castle is not going to be here next year. Mr. Castle's an amazing teacher. All he does is dedicates his time to his students in the school, always making that they're okay, making sure they're okay. He always has the best spirit, no matter what. He makes learning fun and enjoyable. I'll never forget him not letting us leave his class without a fist bump and a smile. Unfortunately, when we heard he was not going to be here, it was a very sad day. We automatically made a petition that already has over 400 online signatures as of third period when I checked my phone, since two days ago, at third period is when we made it. I think letting him go is a huge mistake as he's an amazing teacher, always dedicated to this school no matter what, and he really wants, he really wants the school to be better. Something I learned today during this is that the music programs are being cut down, that's what I understand, and I think that's wrong because when I was in Beverly Vista, I was in band and it was like an experience like no other, and I think that taking that away is a huge mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Galen, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I think at this point, I don't need to convince any member here that Mr. Castle is an asset to our district. It's pretty obvious. I'm also not going to guess as what the problems that we're having here or suggest a solution. However, I'm going to see if the board can find a solution for us. So as I mentioned to you when I spoke to you about a year ago, I learned from my leadership at Cedars that we should never strive for mediocrity, and that's what I'm asking for our school district as well. We should strive to be the best in the region, the best in the state, and the best in the country. That means when we find a program that is clearly working, excelling, we don't just take it away by shuffling a few people around, consider the problem solved, and then moving on, accept the consequences. So moving back to Cedars, going back there for a moment, about eight years ago, we decided that we couldn't be great at everything, but we should really push the things that we are great at. So we had a psychiatric hospital there, but we weren't really good at it. So to the shock of the community, we closed the entire hospital down. We put our resources into the things that we're good at, and that's the philosophy that I think that we should be trying to achieve here. We are, if we're not clearly capable of developing a program that excels, do we really need it? So of any program in our school, is there a program more deserving than this robotics program and with Mr. Castle? So look at our students. How many of them are shooting for MIT, Stanford, Hopkins, and Ivy League schools? Now, when I graduated from this high school 30 some odd years ago, kids didn't just try to go to these schools, they went to them. It has become an increasing rarity for that to happen, and now we see it happening again. So we should be throwing more support behind him and his program. Nope, out of time. We have a robotics competition coming up the weekend after this. I highly suggest that the board members try to attend it and see the incredible school spirit that you will not see anywhere else in this district. Try and go.
I'll be short but powerful.
And then...
I'm not here to criticize your process.
That's okay, and then just, let me just announce the next speaker, if I may. Jenny Cohen, thank you.
I'm not here to criticize your process. I don't know anything about it. I don't want to be, have that hubris, but I'm here for one guy, and that's Mr. Castle. And you knew, I'm sure you were trimming a science teacher, and by now you know from the people who spoke, you'll be gutting the robotics program, which 60 highly motivated and intelligent and committed kids are involved in. 60 kids! That's more than double the amount of kids on the football team, and the robotics team wins! It has... This is a program with national recognition, national, and that's not bullshit. This guy came in here three years ago, he redesigned, he rebuilt this program into something these kids care about. These kids have come alive. This guy works nights and weekends and gets up before the sun rises and stays up all night, and he is literally one of the most dedicated men I have ever met. And not everyone is equal, and not everyone is replaceable. My understanding is there are several possible solutions to keep this guy here and rearrange things so he has the number of classes that'll rationalize his position. My final point is, we're not only trying to teach our kids about academics, we're trying to teach them that loyalty and commitment is rewarded, and not that merit and love and being all-in for people doesn't matter. And I think if he gets lost here, that is going to be a depressing message to the kids that will make them feel powerless and like life isn't fair. So please, please, do whatever you can and be as creative as you can with solutions to keep this guy part of our kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Cohen?
My name is Jenny Cohen, and I'm a freshman, and this is my first time meeting, first year having Mr. Castle as my biology teacher, and he is one of the most creative and caring teachers I've ever met. He puts so much time into making the lesson plans fun for class, and I'm very thankful that he doesn't give us busy work. And any concerns I have, I can always count on him to respond to my emails, which is something most teachers take days or weeks to do. Every assignment I've done in his class most definitely helped me on assessments. The labs we do in his class help me understand the material in a different way because it's more hands-on learning than just taking notes. He also checks on every student to make sure we understand the context we are learning before we move on so we don't panic if we don't understand the material. He also puts so much effort to make sure every student is comfortable with the style of tests we take, whether it's online or on paper. He lets us decide and not just do what's convenient for him. Therefore, if you take this caring, accessible, and enthusiastic teacher out of Beverly Hills High School, it would be a big mistake and a huge disappointment for every student.
Thank you. Okay, and the following individuals submitted a card, "Do not wish to speak but did want their names and statements read into the record." So Georgia Blake, or Blair, he is a great, speaking on behalf... Sir Georgia Blake, or Blair, um, he is a great, uh, speaking on behalf of Mr., Mr. Castle, Robotics Leader, and it would be a shame without him next year. Uh, next person is George Nebes, Naberdezzi. I don't want Mr. Castle to be laid off since he is the great teacher and the best robotics mentor we have, we have had. Um, the next person is Ethan, or, sorry, Ephian Lam. I do not support the action of laying off Mr. Castle, I believe that his profession, I can't, sorry, uh, the progression that we've made in robotics will decline if he leaves. He's done so much for our team. The next person is Eliyahu Shafib, do not fire Mr. Castle. Uh, Danya, no last name, Mr. Castle should not be laid off, he's amazing, he is the sole reason for the success of the Beverly Hills Robotics Team. Nazila Nahabon, Mr. Castle should not get laid off, he is the glue of the robotics team. Nicole, Nicholas Collins, Mr. Castle should not be laid off because he is an integral part of the robotics program. Ethan Store, Mr. Castle is a, Stone, sorry, you had your Rs, Stone. Uh, Mr. Castle is a teacher that has changed both my life and the life of the team and as such, he should not be laid off from the school. Kevin Manavi, I do not wish for Mr. Castle to be laid off. Gali Bar, I am very impressed with Mr. Castle's achievements, it does not make sense to let him go for wrong reasons. Lior Naron, uh, best teacher, role model, don't let this wonderful teacher go. Eli, I cannot make that out, sorry, Eli maybe a nuts or, you guys want to help me? Cats, okay! Okay, Mr. Castle has personally worked for, this is going to be a doctor right now, Mr. Castle personally worked for the advancement of the team and on computer assistant design, he pushes for every, I don't know, to have free professional CAD structure, I think. He's a great teacher and robotics. I don't know, sorry. Um, Skylar Hads, um, the way Mr. Castle teaches motivates me to work hard and keep me interested in school. The experiments we have done in his class so far were so much fun and the, um, next year I was looking forward to having him as my biology teacher, I don't want him, I don't want to lose my favorite teacher. And Nima Pirian, uh, do not fire Mr. Castle. Thank you, oh, I have one, I have two more. Okay, Chaz, I don't know, it sounds like it's Rupero, but it's probably not, that's a make, no, what is it, Chaz?
Upiero.
Okay, hi, how are you? Sorry, Upiero. That I do not support, um, he being laid off or Mr., I do not support Mr. Castle being laid off, I think he should stay.
Mr. Castle will also do pedagogy next year.
Okay, and, um, okay, there's a, I apologize in advance if I don't get this correct. Robteen Aba, sorry?
Robinson.
Robinson, oh, I'm sorry Robinson, how are you? Robinson, okay, I really, um, wish for Mr. Castle not to get fired because he had a big com, um, impact in my life and I, and I've changed today. Thank you Robinson for that. Thank you all for your comments, um, we appreciate it and we appreciate you coming to express them tonight before us. That concludes public comment, I actually also have, I want to enter into the record that Mrs. Colleen Davenport sent a letter for the board and it will be entered into the record. Thank you for that as well. Uh, we are going to move on at this moment with our agenda. Thank you. Staff presentations. School Spirit Update, Mrs. Rebecca Starkins. Is that right?
Yep.
Is it just me? Okay. Hey Scott?
Could you do my mic?
Thank you, Mrs. Starkins, for allowing us to wait for the room to clear out. We're going to now begin with your presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board of Directors and everybody who has stayed, thank you very much. I am delighted to bring you another School Spirit Program update this evening. This is a little bit of an overview, I ask the board members to please draw your attention to the screen, some of the slides have printed out of order and so this will be, I think, more clear to follow. So this is a little bit of a glimpse of the BHHS Style Guide in the Wild. You can see that we have the brand new signage out the front of the school, which has been very well received by our students, they're very excited and taking lots of pictures. The logos have also been used on signage, for example, at PSAT SAT Day and I just saw a sneak peek for the Career Day Agenda and they also used the, the logos and it looks fantastic, so thank you for doing that. Okay, moving forward to the rest of the district, now that we have the high school looking fantastic and moving forward in a great direction, we have chosen the company who actually also did the BHHS Style Guide, Huntoon &amp; Co. Unfortunately, Mr. Huntoon was not, is not able to be here with us this evening, he extends his apologies, um, he wishes that he could be here. Uh, they are an incredible company of a, a big team, um, with incredible talent. They range from illustrators to graphic designers, um, as you can see on the screen, they have worked with phenomenal institutions, Cirque du Soleil, Warner Brothers, I think that that Disney Pictures, that speaks for itself. It's, it's just an incredible history of clientele that they have had. The work that they did with the high school was very well received, it was a great process that they followed before I started here and I have seen the results of what has then gone on to happen and it has been fantastic. Board members, you have also been provided the proposal that Huntoon &amp; Co. submitted in full, so you can read that at your leisure. This is a summary for everybody, uh, if you want to see the entire proposal, it is attached as part of the contract that's attached to the agenda. So just a little quick summary, for BHUSD, we will be receiving the logo mark, the style guide, and the seal. All of this is in response to exactly what our scope of work was, which you represented at the last board meeting. BVMS will be getting the full package, Hawthorne will also be getting the full package, Horace Mann will also be getting the full package, as will Elrodeo. Moreno will be getting a simple mark, the style guide, and a seal for their diplomas and every single entity listed will be receiving all the executables that are listed on the right-hand side. These can range from student IDs to letterheads, business cards, email footers, PowerPoint templates, all to be replicated across the schools and the district. So the focus groups. The structures of the focus group, as I mentioned in our last meeting, will be two meetings, the first one about an hour and a half and the second meeting about one hour. The focus group will be facilitated by Greg Huntoon from Huntoon &amp; Co. and myself and the, um, we have actually asked, you'll see on my next slides how we will make up the focus group, but we have asked certain people to make two suggestions per stakeholder group. The first person that is suggested will be contacted first and the second, second it will be based on availability. So up there on the screen, you can see that we're combining the HUSD and Moreno, because as I mentioned in the previous slides, there is a little bit, a significant amount of less work involved as we don't have a mascot, um, it's the logo, it's the simple mark with the word mark for Moreno, and the seal. So that will be a combined focus group, uh, those stakeholders are listed there. For the Beverly Vista, Beverly Vista Middle School, uh, you can see, I'm just going to read a couple of examples here for the audience, so each stakeholder group is chosen by someone not in my position and not necessarily in a position you might think. This is so that we try and grasp a really wide variety of perspectives and opinions for each school and to ensure that each school is choosing their own direction. So for example, the parent is chosen by the PTA president, the office staff representative is chosen by the principal, the current student ASB president will also be on the focus group, and then we have our board members who have made suggestions for community members and alumni for each focus group, which has been very, very helpful. Then on this next slide are our focus group makeups for Elrodeo, Horace Mann, and Hawthorne. So what's next? Well, it's reaching out to the people who have been chosen and suggested, uh, for our focus groups to begin. Our first school will be BVMS, they have a phenomenal athletics program and it is important that we get them up and running with a great new style guide. We will then move on to our elementary schools, which will happen concurrently, and lastly, and some might say, most importantly, we will be finishing with the district as a whole. The reason that happens last of all is because it is an evolving thing when you are developing graphics and a tone for the district and it's important that we capture the entire district once we have all of the individual schools. If there are any questions, I would be delighted to answer them.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Margot?
Uh, no.
Well, I, uh, there's a lot of thought that's gone into this and, uh, I feel confident that the outcome is going to be very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Shimon Walker?
I agree with Mr. Spitz.
I'm sorry, Walker Shimon.
I agree, looks great.
Thank you. Ms. Marcus?
No comment.
Um, I did have a few questions, Mrs. Starkins, if that's okay? Um, so I, I do understand the work that is being, um, trying to be, the work that is trying to be achieved through this contract. My question is, do you think that this, um, really requires us to enter to, into a contract or can some of this work be done through volunteers or, I mean, I'm just wondering, it's $32,000, I've been thinking about this a lot.
Sure, so I think that it's important whenever anyone is, especially since we've done the reconfiguration, whether it's a school district or any other entity, that we look at making sure that everything is really super consistent. I do think that there is always a time and a place, we have a phenomenal PTA with, full of volunteers and a lot of volunteers throughout our district, um, who do a wonderful job at donating their time. The problem is that it is limited sometimes as to what can be donated and it's hard to segregate out and then maintain and can keep that consistency throughout all of the different schools. We want to have that unified look, um, amongst the schools and the district itself and so I just worry if we take out little sections and, um, except if it was generously donated volunteer work, that we may lose that consistency.
Okay, great, thank you so much, understood. Okay, anybody else?
I was going to say that, you know, we always, uh, try to see ourselves on par with private schools in the area and yet we always fight against the things that we need to do to get there. So I think it's important for us to keep that in mind, not that we, once again, we're basic aid school, we don't need to attract the business, so to speak, but as far as branding and marketing, it's, it's paramount that we do define ourselves in that regards and we haven't in the past and it's been just an amalgamation of so many different opinions, so I'm glad that we're getting this not only underway, but hopefully completed shortly so it could just be done and we can move on as a district with these things intact, all the private schools that, you know, we lose students to in this, in this city, they all have branding, they all have logos, they all have marketing, they have all of it, so is that what attracts them? Probably not per se, but it certainly doesn't hurt us to have that as well.
Great, thank you. Dr. Breggy, anything else?
So I just wanted to add that, um, you know, if you think back, uh, many years, there were, there were so many hardworking hours that, uh, staff and volunteers put in at the high school and unless you have a, a team to help push this through, um, it, it does seem to, there's just so many opportunities for it to go by the wayside and that happened in the past. Fortunately, we were in a position where, um, all of that past work was still respected and we were able to use that, but I think that, you know, this is, this is just the beginning, so to have a strong foundation for branding and then after, you know, we can assure ourselves, this is really going to get done this time, um, then, then the future is, uh, you know, that, that's, that's ours. Uh, but to have the foundation of having every one of our schools go through a consistent branding process is, is what has been missing in the past, so I would, I would agree with Mr. Margot.
Okay, great, thank you, Mrs. Starkins, for your presentation tonight. At this point, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. May I please have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus the following items? Item 9H, 9M, and 9O? Anybody else pulling anything else?
I'm of approval of the consent calendar with the exception of 9H, 9M, and 9O.
I second the motion.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, discussion.
Well, I'll make a motion for the approval of agreement of vendor services with Huntoon &amp; Co., which is 9H.
A second.
Okay, so I just had a question about this, Mrs. Starkins, I'm sorry, um, what is, or, Dr. Breggy, what is the timeline for actually delivery on this, um, services agreement? Like, when, when will this conclude and will all of the deliverables be delivered and on, at the time of the conclusion of the contract? I guess that's my question, or is there still going to be work to do? Sorry, I should have just asked.
No, 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 not far to come at all. So, the scope of work that we laid out was hopefully to be finished by May with a 100% deadline by June.
Of this year?
Of this, yes, of this school year. And there will be no further work beyond that, that has not been included within the scope of work. As I alluded to, great question, how are we breaking it up? Is it going to happen?
Sure.
All, all together at once? Can you do it in a week? No, I think that it's important that we separate it out, so BVMS will be first, that should take, um, as you'll see in the proposal, three to four weeks. Uh, we're hoping to do Hawthorne, our elementary schools, Horace Mann, and Elrodeo concurrently, and then the last one will be BHUSD and Moreno.
Okay, great, thank you so much, Mrs. Marcus, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question, uh, this is only to develop the logos, et cetera, et cetera, right? You, then you're going to have to find companies that are going to print them or do they have any connection with that as well?
No, I'm sure they would be prepared to suggest lots of companies, we have many, many vendors that our PTAs currently use and we have great connections within our community, um, for how we could go forward with who we would use as vendors to produce our incredible athletic wear and t-shirts and all sorts of things that are among, throughout the district, um, but that's not something that is part of this specific scope of work.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it passes five zero, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the property use agreement between First Church of Christ Scientists and BHUSD.
So moved, um, okay, I think I got that, thank you, Mr. Spitz, however, uh, Dr. Breggy, did you want to alert the board as to what this, um, contract will bring to the district?
Sure, um, several weeks ago, um, an, an ongoing problem has been, um, the staff parking at BVMS and, uh, we've been, uh, working so hard to try to get creative with our solutions on, in finding parking for staff. We were able to, with the city's help, find some, uh, parking, uh, North Crescent, uh, that is, um, was a little far of a walk for our teachers. Uh, we were very fortunate to stumble upon, um, a, a new partner, um, and so this opportunity that we have, um, is, is an opportunity for parking, it's underground parking and, um, we visited with, uh, their board chairman, Christopher Bricks, uh, it is right across from Nessa, um, fortunately just steps from Beverly Vista. Um, they have services on Wednesdays and also Saturdays, so, um, we are able to use the, the property, the parking, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, which is a, a huge benefit for us, uh, to be that close and so there's about 25 to 27, uh, parking places and so, um, uh, we're excited that, uh, this opportunity has been made available to us, um, and, uh, recommend that we approve this as soon as possible for- that we approve this as soon as possible for our teachers.
Mr. Spitz, you also pulled this item?
I did. I want, I want board and staff to be aware of the fact that in the 1970s, the district had arrangements with the First Church of Christ Scientist, similar arrangements. And at that time, however, that church owned and occupied what is now the Nessam synagogue. And so the facilities that they had were much, much larger. But the thing that's interesting was that at the time, the individual we dealt with was Mr. Christopher Bricks. And I personally was involved in negotiating with him. I can tell you that he was at all times a most reliable gentleman. He was true to his word, wonderful guy.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I just want to applaud Dr. Bragg and whoever the, I think it was Rebecca Starkins that worked with you on this, to find this and to really be diligent because it took you some time to be able to make a connection with them. And I really think that was pretty good and I'm really glad that we were able to work out something that's close. I wonder what is going to happen with the NESA? Are we still going to be using NESA? I know we have an agreement with them. Are you going to be using them also at the same time? And is that enough spaces for us to? Because I know the one at First Church of Christian Scientists is a protected one, you, once they're in, they're whatever. But the outdoor one at NESA, I mean, are we going to be continuing to use that also?
We will also continue to use NESA as well. And so that, that agreement is still being put together. So that will come before the board. We really were looking at, a lot of this is a trial period with NESA as well. And we're really trying to respect each other's needs. And so NESA has worked with us diligently, as Mr. Spitz said, Christopher Bricks. We've spoken just over and over, this agreement wouldn't have happened without his persistence in wanting to build a relationship with us and what a stand-up guy. So we're, we're very excited about that. So we will be able to utilize both NESA and the First Church of Christ Scientists. So that will happen, just steps away from BBMS.
So when the founding fathers inferred separation of church and state, they did not include parking?
And we did think of that when Mrs. Starkins and I went, actually, we went to a service on Wednesday because we had to, we wanted to make some contact in person. And I thought about that same thing, but we were on our lunch break.
So thank you again, Dr. Bragg, for doing this so quickly. I know that we were just talking about this about, what, four weeks ago, five weeks ago or so? And so thank you for finding a solution to that problem that was identified at BV. So kudos to you and to your staff. Okay, so moving on, can we please have a motion? I know, I'm calling it right now. Can I please?
Yeah, she's going to call.
Yes. I'm calling, everyone's so anxious tonight. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Obstacles? Okay, 5-0. Thank you for that. Moving on, somebody pulled.
So I'll make a motion for ratification of PO report number 15 for 2019-2020.
I will second that. Mr. Spitz, I believe you pulled that one as well?
I did. I had one question on that involving purchase order 15767S. And that is the HMC Architects. I noticed that there's a change in this purchase order from what was $1.2 million, a slight change, to $5 million.
I saw that.
And so I thought that with the change of almost 400%, that perhaps we could get some kind of an explanation of why HMC Architects will be, what will they do that they'll be paid $5 million for?
Who wants to answer that?
I think I can answer it. I think that was the true up that we voted for at the last meeting with the HMC contract.
Yeah, the, we voted on it, but.
We voted, yeah, we approved the true up because it was the change in the overall construction cost changes, the fees, the architect fees. So they were, it's called the true up. So when everything finally gets to the point where we approve a GMAX, then the architects have the ability per contract to true up their fees based on the, based on the actual scope of work that's been described in the GMAX. So that's, that, and I believe it was 3-point-something million was the true up on HMC. So that would add to the purchase order. And Wade is nodding his head, but that's, is that correct? Okay.
Good enough.
Okay. Let's call for the question, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those objecting? None? No objections? 5-0, please. Okay, moving on to superintendent's report. Dr. Bragg?
Thank you. So I just have one item, a very important item, to talk to you about that has been such a priority for all of our staff. I know that it's a concern not only in our schools, but also in our community. So I just want to give you a little bit of an update on the COVID-19, what's happening in our school district. So here's just an overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight, about many of the ways that we are communicating the information to you. I want to talk to you a little bit about spring break and some of the expectations that we have as a school district. And then also go over some FAQs with you and, and what we're doing as a school district. So you may have noticed already that we have a very pronounced dedicated website presence. And so this has grown exponentially over time. This is a separate part of our website so that we are putting all of our materials together. And we're doing it in a very systematic and organized way so that it is easy to find for our parents, just about any type of information that you're looking for. One thing that we're asked for a lot is, from parents in the community is, is, you know, this is, this is scary to children. And so our teachers and our parents have said, is there, is there some resources out there that are available to us so that we can, if we're comfortable, start using in our classroom and also at home? So we have a complete toolkit for adults working and talking with children about COVID-19. So spring break. I know there's a lot going on. I know that there are people, this is very polarizing, and I know that, I talked to people that are on both sides, that we're, we're underreacting, we're overreacting, and so, and everything in between. And so I know that that's happening. It's spring break. I really want people to be able to go away and feel rest assured that even though most of our district is on spring break, many of us are going to be working on this every single day. This is not something that we're just waiting to see what happens. We're being very proactive here. So we want you to feel comfortable, to trust us, take your break, you deserve it, and, and take all necessary precautions for yourself and your family because this really is something that our entire community is involved in. Some of the expectations that we have, if you are visiting a country, please keep in mind, and this is coming right from the CDC, that there are warning areas. And this is changing quite rapidly. So we currently have countries at a level three and a level two, but things are changing so quickly, and I know that you're aware of that, that we're staying on top of that. But they could be adding areas to this warning list over spring break. And so we will be communicating that to you as well so that you're aware of what the CDC is considering to be those warning areas. If you are in a warning area and then you come back to our community, our students are required to stay home, away from students for 14 days. And this is just a standard self-quarantine that we have. You've heard about it, I'm sure, at the moment, right here and now. It's including China, Iran, Italy, South Korea, and Japan. It would not surprise me in the near future, and I'm not an alarmist, that, you know, some of these warning areas could be in our own country. So just be aware that this is changing rapidly, all the time. And it's something that we all need to be vigilant in keeping up on our information. And there's a website there, this presentation will be on the website, that will provide some more information for you. The internet is just saturated with resources for COVID-19. And so we ask that, so that we're talking about the same type of information, that, that these are the links that we're using for information. These are links that have been approved. These are not people that are providing their opinions. These are experts in the field. And so we do ask that when we're talking about COVID-19, that we're sharing the same type of information. So obviously, you know, the list, and you've heard it over and over, you can't underestimate just washing your hands. And, you know, we have heard all kinds of things about, you know, soap being in soap dispensers. And we are doing everything we can, we're working with our custodial team to ensure that our soap dispensers stay full. We are buying hand sanitizer any place we can get it, which is very difficult to get. But we're doing what we can. You may have seen that popping up in, in our schools too. And I know that, and I want to thank our staff. Teachers are spending their own money and they're going out and they're, they're actually purchasing things. And, you know, it takes all of us to, to get the materials that we need, including some of those things that are hard to find, like the hand sanitizer. The big question is, you know, we get calls all day long, and so do our schools and our principals, that it's, you know, people reporting, other people in the community that have had some sort of exposure or that have tested positive in our own community and they're in a home with children. And so we follow up on every single tip that we're given. And it takes a considerable amount of time. And every tip I get, either my team at the district office or, you know, today, just at the end of the day, you know, I had Mr. Mead running around for me on a goose chase. And, you know, we will, because we have to take this seriously. But there, there is a lot of storytelling, there's a lot of panic that's happening and we're just trying to get to, we want the truth and we want to be able to clearly explain what our expectations are. So where we need everyone's help is to, to not panic, to not perpetuate the rumors and to, to really only speak to any, any facts and not hearsay. So when that happens, and I say when because I think it's inevitable, I think that even though we're doing everything we can, the, the reality here is that those test kits are available. And, and I think that, that we're going to see some positive occurrences in, in readings from the COVID-19. So I think we just have to be ready for that. And, and we are currently preparing for every single scenario that you can imagine. There are many families that have indicated to us that for what, so many different reasons. It could be someone in their house that has some health issues, that they don't feel comfortable sending their students to school. We know that that's happening and if parents are, are going to keep, you know your kids best and you know your household best. So if, if parents are going to keep their kids home, we're, we're not advocating for people to do that. But there are a lot of extenuating reasons where a family may make that decision. And we, we understand that that's happening. We're, we're kind of in uncharted territory right now as far as, you know, what do we do with these absences right now? They, they are unexcused if there is not a health-related issue that is accompanied with somebody being pulled out of school. But we're, like I said, things are changing. So we're, we're working with all of our local agencies to see, you know, how we, how we look at attendance in the future. I know a big question is, and it's happening in universities, private places where schools are canceling. And so we are preparing for if that day comes, we will be ready. It's not something that, that we're prepared to do right now. We're taking this day by day. We're looking at the information, the community. We are in contact with just about everybody in our community as well as our local agencies. And so we are constantly looking at that information and I will be in touch with the Board of Education when and if that time comes where somebody in our community has been diagnosed with positive testing. So we're doing so many things as far as, we're, we're communicating, we are working through Student Services right now to, to find the, the latest information that's happening. We're trying to take that information and we're trying to put that together in a, in a very concise way because there's just so much information out there. And many times it's conflicting or it's, it's a department that's not wanting to make a, a final decision, which leaves it a little bit gray. So we're, we're constantly having to, to look at this information and we're constantly having to make decisions. The facilities department, if we've mentioned before, high-touch areas. We have increased our cleaning. We are ready to do even the deepest of cleanings. We actually own some equipment now to where we wouldn't even have to look outside for this type of service, that we can, we can actually have that service in-house and that's new to us. So we're, we're glad to have that available at our disposal when we need it. And there's just constant updates to our board and to our cabinet and to our principals. And, and I hope that our community is pleased with the communication that's, that's coming from the, the district office. Because it's, I know it's ongoing and sometimes it's repetitive, but I feel like it's really good information that's coming out for our community and we're always available for questions. You know, several people on my team, principals, we're all ready to answer questions for And that's about it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
No, I do think it's ironic, though, that right before this discussion, the three consent items that we pulled were HMO.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Margot.
Bringing things together. That's what I do.
I actually, I'm sorry, did, I forgot to touch on one thing, Mrs. Hacker. So, because there, there is a question about field trips. And so, you know, and this is a really, this is a, this is a difficult area. I, I know that, you know, I made a decision where, you know, this is bringing back, you know, even though it's not the same thing, but it's, it's bringing back memories of when I had to call for a snow day. And, you know, not everyone's happy about that. And it's, it's a tough decision to make. And there's always going to be people that can find reasons for something or against something, and I, I absolutely respect that. With the recent cancellation of the Sacramento trip for our fourth graders, it, it really didn't make sense anymore that the largest school district in Northern California had closed their entire district. And it didn't make sense to me, and I refer to cabinet, board members, to, to send our students to a place where they didn't feel like they could hold school. And so that's why that decision was made. And so I think, you know, until things change, right now, we're, we're taking things on a case-by-case basis. And I will keep the board updated as we learn our progress on what is happening next. But I think every event is a little bit different. And as I gave you the example of the, the Sacramento trip, not every area is, is like that. So I think it, there, there's always multiple factors to consider before making a blanket decision at this time.
So I did want to say my texts were blowing up with people on social media. Are they closing school? Are they not closing school? Can you, for the sake of communicating to the public now, give a, give a definitive statement on where we're at with that? Because you went through a presentation, but where are we now with the thought of, of closing the district or not?
So we're, we are not at a place where we're making a decision to close the district. We're, we're working very closely with the CDC and we are aligning ourselves to the practices that they have. And so we are, we are not in a place where that is necessary for us to do right now.
But we, but we are, as you said, and I'm just reiterating for people's understanding, planning for it in case it does happen.
Yes. In fact, you know, we've, we've, we've said this before, that, you know, we prepare our students and our staff for if there's an earthquake and we prepare for if there is a fire. We're doing the same thing for this type of outbreak if, if that happens. And so what's happening behind the scenes would actually blow your mind. And we've really made this our highest priority. And we've really made this our highest priority.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Spitz.
Well, I think that the superintendent has covered the issue very well. I would just like to mention that, as you can well imagine, the district has received many, many letters, have been receiving many letters from parents, people in the community. And they vary greatly. We, I recall a letter where we were urged to close the schools immediately. And we don't have a case that we know of in our community of this illness. So to close the schools at this time doesn't seem like a practical way to go. But people have different attitudes. We received many, many letters regarding the field trip to Sacramento. Overwhelmingly, they were favorable to canceling the trip. But we, I think we respect every
Absolutely.
Every letter and every communication. And what we are trying to do is to be practical and not to be hasty and do the right thing as we move through this situation.
Anybody else, please?
I don't want to belabor the point, but I think the assurances that the parents are looking for, I do just want to touch on, this team has worked tirelessly on putting together a plan so that in the event of something, we are covered. And I just want to continue to reiterate that we are not denying that this is a scenario that has a likelihood to occur. So I really want to make sure that we're focusing on telling parents that we're not sitting here denying it or pretending it away, that we're, the team has been working on a comprehensive plan so that we'll be ready to address these concerns. So I just, I really want to make sure that's communicated.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus.
I just would like to make a comment. I had planned to say a few words, but everybody before me has said most of what I had to say, which is usual. I just want to comment a little bit about the fact that on the field trip to Sacramento, I know that I was asked how I would handle it. And after all the phone calls and all the emails and so on, there are people that were still wanting to go. And there were a lot of people that, of course, didn't want to go. And so you had a problem where you had to make yourself a decision. And it's very difficult. I think you need to think about the fact you put yourselves in our shoes and how you would feel if you had to make that decision. And at that point, as far as I was concerned, if I had been in the shoes of the superintendent, I would have definitely made the decision to not go simply because it was the right decision for our students. We just couldn't send them up to a community or to a school district that was already in a problem. So I hope that the community realizes that they put themselves in our shoes, that we're going to do what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for that discussion, Dr. Breckie. Moving on, Student Board Member, Mr. Ruko Perro.
Yeah, so on the topic of COVID-19, I understand, as Dr. Breckie said, it would be very fearful for students, whether they're healthy or, you know, compromised or the like. But I really believe this district is ensuring student safety, staying up to date on all the information. So as a student or community member, you can wash your hands for 20 seconds. That's definitely advised. That should be practiced year-round. But definitely, at this point, it should be practiced. Hand sanitizer stations are all around the school. So it's, and so, the district is really staying up to date and helping ensure student safety.
Very remarkable.
It was very remarkable seeing the large amount of students in the robotics program and Mr. Castle's class come to speak on his behalf. One thing I do know about Mr. Castle is that he truly inspires all types of students, from highly-driven to non-high-driven students. That's just my one comment about Mr. Castle. Another positive note, Career Day is tomorrow. The College and Career Centers, Ms. Dubin and Ms. Redston and all other administrators have really worked hard to make this, to organize this day. It's going to be very hectic with a lot of people running around, but it really always is effective and gives students a light into different careers. So it's very exciting about that is happening tomorrow. And lastly, about student focus groups. I was actually a part of two recently, one with Mr. Damico. He came to the ASB class at the high school to just discuss technology and its implementation. So it's really awesome that student input is being taken seriously in order to take action. As well as being part of a focus group just for the district strategic plan at the middle school. It's very productive, and it's very exciting to see student input. So, that's all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ruko Perro. Moving on to the agenda for Business and Finance, I just want to point out that Agenda Item 12A and 12C, is that correct, Mr. Wade? Have been pulled from tonight's agenda. So we will not be discussing those. We probably need to...
We'll need to table those when we get to them.
Well, we can, I'm just letting you know, if you were going to pull those, if anybody was going to pull those, those are not up for discussion, so.
Right. But we didn't tell them when we approved the agenda.
No, we didn't.
So we'll have to pull them when we get to them.
So the first one is up.
Well, we have to do 11A, Human Resources.
Oh, I skipped that one, sorry. Okay. Human Resources. Dr. Breckie, or, I'm just going to do that one. May I please have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-2020-17 for the resolution to reduce or discontinue particular kinds of service.
One second. Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor?
Discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Do you have anything, Thomas? Okay. So, you know, we've heard a lot. We come around to this every year at this time before the Ides of March. And so what I wanted to ask, because community members are really concerned about programming for their students. You know, that's, I think, the biggest concern. And there's, obviously, tonight, we had a huge concern for an individual. But we're not discussing individuals as a board. We cannot do that. But for us, we discuss positions. So I was going to ask a couple of questions because we heard about all the cuts and how they're going to decimate programs. Can somebody elaborate how we're not decimating programs? And what, how, you know, we've been accused of gutting music and gutting this, how that's not the case? That removing positions doesn't mean removing programs. So I want to address that for the public.
So let me start by...
And I have specific ones unless you want to cover all of them, so.
Well, let me start with the robotics. Because there's, there isn't any desire at all to remove that program at all. I think what's really hard, and you're right, we do this every year. And it's, you know, we don't take this lightly because we do know that there are people attached to our positions. And it's actually heartwarming and difficult to sit here when you know that you have somebody that has touched as many hearts as Mr. Castle, for example. And there's several others that are also, that are on this list. But I think it's, the one issue that it's always difficult is that, you know, clearly, we're overstaffed. And it almost sounds very sterile to say that. But, you know, we've been overstaffed for quite some time. And there's only one way to correct that. And I wish that there was a process. We can't pick and choose oftentimes who we keep in a position. You know, we have to follow our union contracts, and we respect that. And so oftentimes, it is, it comes down to credentialing, and it comes down to seniority. So I know that's more than what you asked, but I did want to reassure people that, of two things. The robotics program is not something that is being cut. We're very thankful and grateful where it is today. But I also want to throw out there, too, what's difficult for people to understand is we have a, you know, again, with deadlines, we have a March 15 deadline. And so what happens now is so many things and possibilities can happen with our staff. We have people that find another job someplace else. They are, have a spouse that's transferring. Somebody takes a leave of absence. Somebody, and if you've been in the district for a while, in any district, oftentimes that happens. And it's confusing to people because, you know, here you are putting out pink slips, but you're hiring people back. And that's just, that's the way that this works. And so, it's early. You know, there's a lot of things that can happen. We can't make those promises. But we are held by a deadline of March 15 to make these decisions. And I know it doesn't feel good. But there's oftentimes that, through the remaining months of the year, that things change and that staffing seems to shift all the time, so.
And it is all too often, in our experience, that people will leave in August before school starts. We cannot control, we can control our positions. We have position control. That's March 15. That's what dictates that. But we can't control when people make life decisions and move or do whatever. And that could happen up to the day that school starts, maybe the first week after school starts. We never know.
Or in two weeks.
Exactly. So the couple of other programs, thank you for elaborating on that. Music, there was talk about gutting music in the elementary schools or at all. And I want to make sure that people are clear about how that's not happening.
Yeah, so I can jump in. Through just the budget cuts itself, through the staffing cuts, we are continuing, like Dr. Breckie had stated, we will continue to support our robotics program. In addition, we still have our vocal performance music program at the elementary levels. We are looking, again, each and every year at better ways of being able to support our students instructionally. And our primary focus is always the instruction within the classroom itself, whether that be around math, ELA, science, and social studies. And so we are starting to look at ways to be able to free up some instructional minutes after reconfiguration had happened. So we are also looking at ways to leverage other staff in the district to be able to help introduce the instrumental music to our maybe possible grades four and five. So those will be in conversation with our VAPA teachers. I'm trying to set a meeting, actually, right now with some of our VAPA teachers to listen to some of the ideas that they have about continuing that pathway. So yes, there is two less instructional music teachers on our elementary campus. But there isn't a discontinuation of our VAPA program in our elementary campus.
Okay. So we'll be shifting the way it's delivered. We're not going to be eliminating it. Okay. Last thing, foreign language at the high school. Because we heard from people tonight about that as well. So I wanted to put those fears to rest about some people, about how that's going to look in the future.
Again, we are not cutting any of our world language programs. We are still offering French, Hebrew, and Spanish. And we are, due to student data, student enrollment into the courses, we are in a position where we will need to combine some courses. If you look at our competitors around the United States, such as Palo Alto and school districts that we want to compare ourselves to, you can also see that there is more efficient ways of delivering world language. We currently are running eight different levels within a single subject versus most districts run five levels. You have a French 1 and 2, which is your typical entry level, which is the majority of the students, most parents even. Took the two years to be able to get into or at least check the box on the application process. But then you have the students that are really committed to the program or also, like Ms. Carlson had stated, applying to those Ivy Leagues. Those are typically an honors-level course. If you're able to make it to French 3, shouldn't you be awarded to, before doing so? So we're looking at streamlining that into French 3 or Spanish 3 or Hebrew 3 as an honors course, so 3, 4. And then you have your advanced placement. Right now, we're running French 1, 2, 3, 4, honors 2, 3, 4, and advanced placement. And so, we're really looking at trying to ensure that the students that are participating in our world language are getting the credit where credits do. If you're a third year, I believe that you should earn that honors credit. So we're streamlining those courses.
Thank you for those clarifications. I appreciate it.
Mr. Spitz?
No, I think Mr. Margot's questions and the responses have been adequate.
Thank you. This is Walker Schuman.
I agree. And I'm thankful for the questions so that it can bring clarification to parents. These are some of the hardest things that board members have to do. It's a heartbreaking time when you have to cut staff. It's even worse when it's staff that is so beloved. So we don't take these decisions lightly. We are hopeful that there will be movement down the road so that we can retain beloved teachers like Mr. Castle. So I hope everyone feels that they've been heard. I hope everyone understands that these programs are going to be maintained. And I hope everyone really understands that we take this, these decisions very weighty. We recognize that these are not easy decisions to make and flippant decisions that we make easily. They're very difficult.
Mrs. Marcus.
I just want to reiterate that during the time period between March 15 and the start of school, it's a very fluid thing that keeps to happen. And you have teachers that will change their minds. Some will leave, some will take a leave. You never know what's going to happen. And even with the ability to do some creative types of scheduling or what have you, that many of these things will be rescinded. So we often find that the reduction in faculty changes almost daily or even monthly as we move forward. So I just hope that all is not lost and that we will be able to maybe do something with these, especially this teacher who was so highly spoken for tonight. And I think that it hurts, but let's keep our fingers crossed.
I just want to reiterate that I, you know, really appreciated everyone's, the public statements made today by mostly students. They don't fall on deaf ears. I think we all are hearing the message loud and clear. And of course, we're governed by deadlines, as Dr. Breckie just expressed. And it's unfortunate that those realities exist for the dais here. And so I'm hopeful, just as for the best outcome. And again, I just want to reiterate that we are listening to you loud and clear. I did want to focus on, there was a statement made by a student, I believe, about alluding to the fact that we were cutting music program at BV. And so I appreciate Mr. Margot's questions, but I don't think that that particular area was explained. So I'm going to ask staff to please, I think that was a mistake, obviously, in the statement that was made. Could you please explain to the community what is being retained as far as the music program? And I don't believe we're compromising the music program at all at BV.
Correct. We are not compromising the Visual and Performing Arts Department at all at Beverly Vista Middle School. We are simply reallocating some of those that are leading some of those programs. And so all the programs are still running. We are still student-focused, based off student selecting their elective course and utilizing that student data to be able to drive our master scheduling. And so we honor still all those programs that we have offered. And that student enrollment has assisted us in being able to build into that master schedule. So none of that is being cut. We are simply reallocating and relooking at who's delivering certain programs.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we're going to move to call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2019-2020-017?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Moving on to Business and Finance.
So I'll make a motion to table Item 12A.
And...
And can I add 12C?
Yes, please, thank you.
And also Item 12C.
Okay, who seconded? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are going to move, all those in favor of eliminating Items 12A and 12C from the agenda?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? 5-0. Moving on to Item 12B. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Will the approval award of RFP number 1920-PORD05 for high-speed internet service provider?
So move? All those in, discussion, please. Mr. Margot, you have a question?
Yeah, I had asked staff a question. And I just wanted to share with everybody. It was regarding the
Sure.
High-speed internet service providers. I said, who do we use now and what do we pay monthly? The response I got, correct me if I'm, Mr. Damico, did you give me the response? Did that come from you? Okay. So I'm going to read a verbatim. So I'm going to read a verbatim. If something is different, correct me. But we currently, we currently use Spectrum. Our three-year contract is up for renewal, which is why we needed to go out for a bid on a new contract. We are recommending renewal for five years. Under the new contract, we will pay about $1,200 less per month than we are currently paying. We are increasing our bandwidth at the same time from five gigabytes to 10 gigabytes in anticipation of increased requirements of one-to-one computing, increased use of the internet for academic content, view Sonics in all schools, buildings, the high school, et cetera. So that's.
One quick correction.
Sure.
And I apologize for the, for the math error. It's, it's $200. Let me just make sure I've got it right. After the discount, we're currently paying $1,651, 13 a month.
Uh huh.
The new monthly rate will be $1,408.80, so I.
Oh, so it's not $1,200, it's $200?
$200, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
$1,200 a year.
It's still, monthly or a year?
A, and a month.
That's monthly.
Monthly.
So it's $2,400 a year.
Plus more bandwidth.
Plus more band, double the bandwidth, yes.
Great, okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, five zero. Thank you. I need a motion for item 12D, approval of 20, of the 2019-20 second interim report with a positive certification.
So moved.
Mr. Margot and Mrs. Marcus. Okay. Sorry, I think it's Mrs. Marcus. I'll give it to Mrs. Marcus, yes. Okay, do we have a presentation, Mr. Wade?
Yes, we have a very, very short presentation tonight. Before I get started, just want to thank Ms. Villaflor, our Director of Fiscal Services, and our staff for pulling all these numbers together. They're doing their, their nine-to-five job every day, but they're also training on the new fiscal system. So they're doing double duty right now, so I just want to shout out to the Business Services Department. So tonight, I want to cover three things with the second interim. We want to look at year-to-date actual expenses and how we're doing. We also want to look at the current year's budget. And finally, briefly, look at next year and our current multi-year projection. So it'll be a pretty fast presentation for the board. So we do a second interim because we want to show the actual revenues and expenses through January. We want to show any budget updates as a result of the audit and kind of look at what we think the year is going to end at when we get to June 30th. So that's why we do a second interim. We want to give all this information to the board and to the public and to the County Office of Education. So year-to-date, we have some trends I want to share with the board that are really exciting, actually. Our utilities are down compared to last year at this time by about $163,000. And you can see the decreases in gas, electricity, and water. And some of that, of course, has to do with, we took a facility offline. Elrodale was offline, but there's some, there's some usage improvements at other facilities. Something near and dear to my heart, our late charges and penalties. We should never have a late charge of penalties, and we've decreased those by 73% compared to last year. So we're paying our bills on time, which is a good thing. So that's a shout out to my accounts payable department. Our legal fees in the general fund have decreased by about $200,000 compared to last year. Now, just a caveat, our overall legal fees related to construction and MTA and oil wells and some of those things are about the same. They're, we're running about $1.7 million year-to-date. So they're the same as last year, but our general fund legal fees related to student services and related to human resources are down by about 50% compared to last year. So I just want to bring that to the board's attention. And our consultants and independent contractor percentages are down compared to last year by about $211,000.
We couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that again, please? [laughter]
I think you heard me. So these are really, really exciting trends. I just want to shout out to the folks that make this happen every day. So when you look at our revenues in the general fund last year compared to this year, you'll see that our revenues are up. Last year, this time through the end of January, we were at $38.4 million. Those are actual dollars coming in. This year, at $42.4 million. Most of that, of course, is related to an increase in property taxes. And our expenses, give or take, are about the same. They're about $500,000 more compared to, to last year. So when you have that, you know, big bump in revenue and a pretty, pretty stable expenses, what you get is a situation where by the end of January, if you look at our actuals compared to last year, last year, we had a positive balance sheet, if you will, of $4.2 million at the end of January. This year, we have a positive of $7.5 million. So that's something, as you look at actual revenue and actual expenses through January, something that we want to highlight. So we also want to look at our budget. So in this chart, you see what our adopted general fund budget was back in June, where we were at first interim and where we now are at second interim, which is through the end of January. And there's a couple of little footnotes there. When you look at general fund revenues and general fund expenses, you'll see a bump of $2 million, and I'll explain that in just a second. So that looks like really out of the ordinary, in two months, what happened, but let me show you what that really is on the next slide. So we have to do something, we have to do a projection called STIRS on behalf. And this started two or three years ago, where the state of California says, in your revenue and in your expenditures, you have to book the amount that the state of California is going to contribute to your STIRS retirement. So this is really a fake entry. It's just an accounting entry. We don't ever pay out $2.9 million. We don't get the revenue for $2.9 million. But what it does, when you look at our books, it looks like we've got extra revenue and extra expenses. But it's not real revenue and it's not real expenses. So it's something that, that the state of California requires us to do. Those CBOs like me, they're like into conspiracy theories. We think what they're doing is setting up so in the future, we're going to have to take over that responsibility from the state of California. But they've started to have us do this. So it's something we want to point out to the board. Also, I just want to point out workers' compensation expense. And I think I talked to the board about this a little bit at first interim. Currently, in the current fiscal year, we're over allocating the amount we collect for workers' comp. So right now, in the current fiscal year, we're allocating about 5% of salaries into the workers' comp account. We should really be allocating between 3% and 3.5%. So when we end up closing the year, we're going to have expenses that are less than what we, that we're actually going to incur. So as we move forward, we're going to have to talk to the board about what to do with those funds. Can we use them in the current year? Can we use them next year? So we'll continue to have that discussion with the board. So when you look at actual expenses when we close the books, they're going to be lower by probably about $1 million because we're over allocating workers' comp expenses right now. Okay? So that's the current year. And these are our other funds. There haven't been really many changes in our other funds. We have a cafeteria fund. We have our reserve fund for economic uncertainties. We have our Measure E and BH bond funds, developer fees, self-insurance, retiree health benefits. Haven't been too many changes in these other funds at second interim, other than to say that our, our revenue for food service program has actually gone up, so our projected contribution has gone down. So our kids, especially at, at Beverly Vista Middle School, are eating more at lunchtime. I think having all those sixth and seventh and eighth graders together makes them eat more. So, so that's a good thing, and we're going to continue to review that. Just a side note on cafeteria, we're going to be forming a committee with the community to look at our food service program, and that committee's going to get to work next fall to look at our cafeteria program. Measure E and Measure BH, if you look at our current budget, it says we're going to spend $190 million. That's projecting out the total projects to date for the future for Measure E and BH. But really, next, this year, we're probably only going to expend somewhere around $95 million. So when we close the books, we're not going to expend $190 million this year. We're going to expend probably around $95 million. So that's how our current year budget looks as we look at June. So multi-year projection's my favorite. So we're doing our multi-year projection assumptions right now. And when we look at expenditures for next year, we have to, of course, put in those numbers, the implementation of the third and final year of our collective bargaining agreements for next year. We're looking now at student enrollment declines of, you know, less than, less than 100 students or about 100 students or so. We also staff based on the following classroom staffing ratios, and these have not changed. TK is 21 to 1. K3 is 23 to 1. Fourth and fifth grade are 29 to 1, and sixth through 12th are 145 student contacts. And those numbers haven't changed. Those were the same numbers for the current year. And these multi-year projections are based on FTEs being reduced at elementary and secondary by about five FTEs. Our revenues are based on the assumption that we'll have a JPA agreement similar to our current JPA agreement with the city, that our federal and state categorical programs will remain about the same as far as Title I mandated cost, instructional and non-instructional lottery, they'll continue at the same levels. We are excited. We believe that we're going to get additional SELPA funding for our special education program next year to bring us up to this estate standard, and that could be additional funding of about $350,000. And the driver, the biggest driver of our revenue, of course, are local property taxes. We are a community-funded basic aid district. We believe in the next couple of years, our property taxes will continue to increase at about 4.5% to 5%. We're confident about the 4.5% to 5% because of the following. When we look at assessed valuation of our, our community, you see here a chart that goes back to 2013, and you can see the annual increase of assessed valuation, which is the driver of our property tax revenue. And you can see on average, you know, 6.71% for the current year, 7%, 9%. The lowest year being about 5.2% back in 2015. So when we see that and when we talk to LA County tax collector and we get our final numbers in May, we're still confident at this point, even given all the things happening with the current stock market and the coronavirus and things happening, that our property tax revenue is still going to be somewhere around the 4.5% to 5% range. But we'll bring updated numbers to the board in, in May when we do some more budget development. So here are our second interim multi-year projection. I'm sorry, the numbers are a little bit small. So when you look at the middle column, our 2021 projections are right now that we would have revenue of about $80 million, expenses of about $80 million in the general fund. We'd have a food service contribution of about $400,000. And for the first time in a long time, we're going to set aside money for deferred maintenance of about $1.6 million, and an operational gain or loss of next year of $1.9 million. I think as we work through the development of the, the budget for next year, you're going to see that $1.9 million drop substantially. Our goal, each time we bring a budget to the board for approval, is to make sure that our budget is balanced. So we have some work to do, but we think we have the capacity to bring that $1.9 million number closer to zero, which is our goal as staff. So just looking at these numbers as projected, however, you'll see that we maintain a reserve of 21% and 22% in the out years. So why is that important that we maintain a reserve? It's important because we are a basic aid district, and fluctuations in property taxes can be detrimental to a basic aid district. So basically, districts generally have a higher reserve than LCFF districts. And secondly, your board policy says, you can read it here for yourself, that the district will maintain a 20% general fund expenditure reserve. So you have a board policy that says you need to have at least 20%. And if you look at our multi-year projection, we're maintaining just above 20%. So we're happy with that. So in conclusion, we're asking the board to approve the second interim. We'll submit it to LACO for their review, and we're asking for a positive certification as we move into budget development for next year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, Mr. Recubaro.
It seems very awesome, all the work that your business services department's doing. And it's amazing that you can have such a professional presentation. A high school student can understand it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
It's because we have smart high school students. The current resolution that we voted on tonight, are those numbers included in this?
No, actually, the, this multi-year projection is based on five FTE, and the resolution you voted on tonight is 10.8 FTE.
So it's already changing right now?
It's already changing.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Spitz?
It's helpful that, that you have segregated out the deferred maintenance amounts in the next two years as transfers out, rather than just throwing them into maintenance expense where it would be hidden. And I assume that that's really the reason that you have it there, is transfers out, so that.
It's large.
So because it's, these are significant numbers.
Correct. You are correct. We will put those dollars in a separate fund beginning next year so that we're completely transparent about both our need for deferred maintenance and the cost of deferred maintenance projects.
Right. Now, to my recollection, I may be wrong in this, but to my recollection, this is the first time that interim budget, any kind of budget, including interims, are presented to the board without first a board study session, be presented in a board study session. And I want to, I want to discuss that a little bit. First of all, I can understand how helpful this is to staff, because this is a lot of material to pull together, and it's, it has to be presented to LACO by the 15th of March. This is the 10th of March. So if I had any concerns, for example, about the allocations that you're making or the assumptions that you're making, I may as well not express them, because this has got to go out now. So I want to point out that it certainly is an advantage if this can come before the board in advance, a week, at least a week, a couple of weeks before, so that if there is any discussion of assumptions that might lead to a change, and there have been in the past, although I do think with you here, there is less likelihood of being any changes. But do you understand that what I'm saying is that the board in this case has really no opportunity to challenge or question any of the allocations or assumptions? This is, we must rubber stamp this to get it in time. And so I think it's an issue worth discussing. Do you have any thoughts on that?
The report is as of the end of January, so we don't have much time before March 15th. We do have two board meetings in February. So it could be possible to bring maybe a tentative or draft discussion to the board the last meeting in February, just to take a look at it, knowing that it, the numbers won't be finalized. So we can definitely look at that, that model if it works for the board.
Okay.
I think it would be preferable.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Ms. Walker Schuman.
I just want to thank you for your presentation for the entire financial services department. You guys clearly are working very well as a team, and we appreciate, we appreciate the work and we appreciate the presentation. So thank you.
I have a few comments. First of all, in the past, when we got this served, I used to wince in pain because I never understood it. I'm so unbelievable that I understand everything pretty much now. I know we just looked at another item where we had a reduction in FTE, and in this, we're looking at four reduction or five?
Five.
And we had, there's 10.5 or 10.8 in the other one. That's quite a difference.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering if there's a comment about that disparity for that. Then I have a question about, you mentioned about the operating surplus, what's about $7.5 million?
Currently, when you look at the current year actuals to date through the end of January, the revenue received exceeds the expenses paid out by that amount.
Do you think that at the end of the year, that we will still be at that number?
No.
Okay.
No, it'll be much lower.
Be much lower.
Yeah.
Okay, that, so that's, we shouldn't be thinking that we're.
No, no.
We're in good state. And, and another question I have is, do you have any ideas about, you said we're going to have to look at how we can reduce one- to have to look at how we can reduce 1.9 million, $1,900,000 in the deficit, as I recall? Do you have any, you said, we got to look at that. Do you have any ideas where that could come from? And maybe that's part of this FTE, whatever, I'm not sure.
Correct. So on this slide, you'll see the five FTE. Those FTE reductions are based solely on enrollment. So those projections that I put into this report were not based on the programmatic discussions that just happened over the last couple of weeks, but solely on enrollment. So now we're going to have to build in the other, the other things that we've talked about tonight into these projections. I think that for every FTE, and I hate to reduce it to dollars, but it's between 100 and 120,000 dollars. So an additional five reductions is, you know, do the math, six or 700,000 dollars. But there's other places in the budget to look for budget reductions. I pulled some staff today, and we've identified four or five consultants that we use, have used in the past, that we're gonna, not going to use in the future. So that's going to be substantial reduction in cost. We talked a little bit about the workers' comp over allocation, let me see where that's at, of somewhere around $900,000. At the end of the year, we expect that to be a little bit higher. So what could happen? One of the options for the board would be for next year, reduce your workers' compensation expenses by a hun, by this, let's just say $1 million surrounding, and then that 1.9 million immediately goes to $900,000 as a deficit for next year. So there's, there's several options for the board to consider as we move through budget development for next year.
Thank you for your explanations. I appreciate them.
Mr. Spitz.
Mrs. Hacker, I have one more comment, if you please.
Sure, absolutely.
I think it's important to note that for, in the future years, looking at the, the multi-year projections, the next two years are years where we are not yet under contract with, with, with the various unions. And therefore, these projections cannot have any increases in salaries. And so you have to bear in mind that that may not be realistic. And in fact, that there's a good possibility that, that there will be some kind of increases in salaries, which will have an effect on the bottom line in those years.
Yes, sir. In 2021, we have the last year of the collective bargaining agreement, but you're absolutely right, in 2122, there are no salary increases projected for that year. Correct.
But there is cost of living, right? That's.
There is the step and column, but, but no other cost of living.
That's what I meant, step and column. Thank you.
Okay, great. I guess my only question to that, to that end would be, what about benefits, PERS and the projections for increase, and especially being that the stock market has really not had a good week this week? I am understanding that it is going to heavily impact these numbers as well.
Right. So we have our increased, increased cost of PERS and STIRS built into this, as we know them right now. There is one item in the current year budget that I should probably bring to the board's attention, and it's based on interest rates. We get some interest from the money we have at the county treasurer. If interest rates really go down to close to zero, that'll impact our revenue of interest revenue for the rest of the year. So we'll look at that and bring those numbers back to the board. But that could be a current year impact to the current fiscal situation the country's facing.
So I understand, this is your first year with us, correct?
Correct.
So I, I do understand, I really appreciate Mr. Spitz's comments, but I also understand that, you know, this is like a balancing act, and I hope that we get the study sessions, you know, that we, we were used to having. And I just want to say, I'm very pleased to hear that you're already planning for the next study session on the budget, which is May 19th, correct? And so I think that there'll be some opportunity there, Mr. Spitz, to, you know, correct the situation. But I do understand his point, it's well taken, and I think we can correct that going forward. But I do appreciate the, the information. I do have a request, and I kind of wrote this note to Mr., to Dr. Bregge, to my left as, after we left the item. And it occurred to me perhaps, and I'd like to ask, if the branding contract that was approved earlier could be taken out of the developer fees, since it's a one-time event and it has to do with reconfiguration? I'd like you to try, if that's possible.
We can, I'll have a discussion.
Discussion? Yeah. I think it's worth considering. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to call for the question. All those in favor of approving the 2019-20 second interim report with a positive certification?
Aye.
Okay, that's four zero. Mrs. Marcus is absent from that vote. Going on to planning and facilities, may I please have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to proceed with the purchase of instrument storage cabinetry from Wanger, or using the Omnia Partners Piggyback Contract.
I will second that. Okay. Me. I think I'd be here by a second. Okay, so any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes four zero.
I move approval of proceed with the purchase of flooring and installation materials from KYA Services by utilizing Weisburn Unified School District Piggyback Number One for Beverly Hills High School.
Okay, second please.
Second.
Mr. Spitz. Thank you. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, four zero. It passes. Mrs. Marcus is absent from that vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Edgar Garza Construction to perform electrical network modifications necessary to remove modular buildings in order to investigate the source and impact of drilling fluids at the high school.
I second. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed or abstentions? Passes four zero. And Mrs. Marcus is still absent from that. We will move on to board policies.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of board policy 5131.62 tobacco nicotine products.
I'll second. Okay, is there a discussion on that?
I just want to point out, the impetus of this is to add, really add e-cigarettes and vaping to the conversation, where the previous board policy only references just tobacco alone. So just for edification for the community, we are updating the policy to represent all forms of that horrible vice. So.
Yes, Mr. Spitz.
Yeah, I, I have a suggestion. Throughout this new policy, revised policy, it refers to tobacco slash nicotine products. However, vaping, there are two types of vaping. One of them is based on nicotine, has a nicotine base, and that is the one that damages brains. But the other one has cannabis base, and that's the one that damages lungs. So I'm wondering whether, since we're mentioning nicotine, tobacco slash nicotine, whether we shouldn't say tobacco slash nicotine slash cannabis?
Isn't cannabis in a separate drug policy?
Ms. Chisholm?
That's correct, Mr. Margot. And additionally, there's new guidance for schools out specifically regarding cannabis, so we would need to look at a separate board policy for that.
Okay.
I can bring that to you soon.
But this is, this is vaping that's cannabis-based. I think it's.
Well, our policy is nicotine-based. This is specifically for tobacco and nicotine-based products. We have separate policies that address cannabis and marijuana and stuff like that. And then Dr. Chisholm said that we're going to have to introduce new policies based on...
New laws and new guidance for, for schools. We can, we can address the vaping of cannabis in that other policy.
Okay.
Let me ask a question to my colleagues. Do we, since there's no discussion, do we want to waive the first reading and approve a second reading? Because I'll withdraw the motion.
I was going to ask if Mrs. Walker-Schmidt had any questions? Did you? No, because we didn't go around, so.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I don't have any questions.
So I think that we can waive the first reading, Mr. Margot?
So I'll amend my motion.
If everyone's agree, if everyone agrees, I would agree to that. Mr. Spitz, would you agree to that? Okay.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion to waive the first reading and approve the second reading of BP 5131.62.
Okay.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay, great. Thank you. All those in, so we're just going to move on then? Correct?
To vote, yeah. Unless you want to wait for Mrs. Marcus to appoint.
I'll wait for you, Mrs. Marcus, to vote. All those in favor for the first reading for board policy 51?
Second reading.
Second reading, I'm sorry. Board policy 5131.62 tobacco nicotine products.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? The board passes that with the five zero vote. Okay, moving on to the discussion of board policy AR 6146.11, alternative credits for graduation. So if everyone's okay, I'd like to start that discussion. I actually put that on the agenda with Mrs. Marcus. The purpose for bringing that to the board's attention was that we recently, if you remember last year, around May of 19, last year, we modified that policy from 20 units to 40 units, is that correct? If I'm remembering that correct? For credits outside of Beverly Hills High School. So throughout the last few months, I've often been approached by parents who ask me if this policy takes precedence over, or dictates or mandates how we deliver education to students who might have an IEP. And so of course, my instinct is to say IEPs take precedence, just because it's dictated by federal and state law. But rather than saying that, I wanted to bring it back to the board, because we actually did this in just a few months ago, in May. And so I thought it was very important for us to have clarity around, you know, what the board intended to do with that, and just to have clarity as a board, you know, where we have consensus as to what we mean by that, and then defer to staff to ask, you know, what our practice is. So I like to say that I would assume that, you know, what I initially stated is that we would treat IEP students different, because they have different needs, and, you know, we have to kind of follow the IEP. And correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that how you understand it to be? Mr. Seaman, Mrs. Chisholm? I, I don't even know who, whose part is this, because I would assume both of you would have to work together.
I can address the general education student and for all students. So when I brought the board policy to your approval, I was removing the 20 credits, which also was considered, and I can't even think of the word right now. It was run through UCLA, it was correspondence courses, and that's how the board language actually was written. And so my recommendation to the Board of Education was to be able to allow a student to expand posts R4 brick and mortar walls by one class each year. So that was where the 40 credits had come from, to expand all students' opportunity to take 40 credits.
Sure. And so regarding students with IEPs and 504s, this policy is not applied as a hard, fast rule without flexibility for our students. The IEP team does have the ability to recommend additional credits above the 40 units if it is the recommendation and the offer of FAPE, Free and Appropriate Public Education, for that specific student. So we have done that in some cases, and we have, we've made that recommendation, and we have not made that recommendation in other cases. It's on a case-by-case basis, based on the assessment and the individual education plan for that student. So it is possible, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, thank you. So does the board have clarity on that? How we?
Well, I think, I think, if I may.
Yes, please. Mr. Recubaro.
I would, I would say that if that's the intention, Dr. Chisholm, that, that it is flexible, then I think there should be something in the language that represents the fact that that flexibility exists, because it's then all too easy to refer back to the policy, the exact language in the policy, where you can, as needed, to say, well, it's not in the policy, so we can't subscribe to it. But if, if we have the flexibility in the language, then at least, and I would say in only in reference to IEPs and 504s right now. Although I will say, as a little sidebar, that I think that schooling is, is going to change in the next decade, and we need to be more flexible with that overall. And in order to personalize learning for students and their experiences, we're going to have to probably revisit this policy a few times, depending on how things roll out in public education. But I, I think that we need to maintain a line about what defines a Beverly Hills High School diploma, right? So we need to be clear about that.
Absolutely.
And however, that, whatever we do, it's, if it's 51% of the classes have to be, whatever it is that we, we do, I don't. And the other question is about, how does any of this play in with the Independent Learning Center, right? Does any of this flip over to that with, with these, with this policy? So.
Okay, so I'm going to leave those parts to Mr. Seaman. But the, in respect to adding in specific language regarding individual education plans, we have to be careful not to usurp the authority of the IEP team. State and federal law already are, laws are in place that allow the team to have that flexibility. So what it is, is a matter of training and making sure staff understands how to implement this policy, which we have done. And I've, I've actually gone and spot checked a couple of IEPs. I have one sitting here that I, that I pulled, that I think is probably the onus of this conversation. And it was explained very clearly that it can be overwritten if that's the IEP team's recommendation and offer of free and appropriate public education for that particular student. That's key.
Then I think that language needs to be part of the policy.
As long, as long as it, it's clear and it, and it leaves it up to the IEP team.
Right, if that's, if that's, if that's the law.
It has to be, it has to be that.
If it has, if that's the overriding factor, then exactly, there should be reference to it in the policy.
We have in other policies, such as our, our permit policy, there, there is a reference specifically to students with IEPs and 504s, a process that has to happen when we're looking at any revocation of that, of that permit. So it does, it does exist. The precedence is there.
Like I said, I would support putting some sort of language in this particular policy to reference that.
Okay, I'll address something and bring it back to the board.
Well, you'd have to get direction from the board.
Well, let's just go around the table, and I think, Mr. Seaman, you were going to, he had asked something about the.
Independent Learning Center.
Yep. And so the, the actual board policy indicates external credits granted towards graduation. So our asking, when the board policy was brought to you, we are taking up to two classes from an external partner, whether that be Fusion, whether that be K-12, at the time it was, it was actually referencing to the 1980s, that's the last time it was touched, around UCLA correspondence courses, because UCLA used to have an extension school for students that might have failed something. And so the actual intent of the 40 credits is, what are we willing to be able to take to still maintain integrity of that Beverly Hills diploma? And that was the 40 credits, and it was the one class per year, which would also allow our students to be able to expand their course offerings, because they have to maintain to be full-time students here. The blended learning that is offered through the ILC is still a BHUSD staff member, and they're still BHLs students. And so that doesn't include into the 40 credits, because they're still being taught by Beverly Hills teachers.
But what I'm really referring to is the IEP 504 students that, that, you know, beyond the 40 credits, it should be, you know, whatever is best for the student, right? Obviously, within a parameter. Now, if, if a student is taking the majority of classes outside of the high school, well, that's another story. And we can't really support that. I wouldn't support that. But if, if the majority of classes are at the high school, and more than 40 credits are, right, there's 235 to graduate or something?
Correct.
So, so if it was 100 credits outside of the high school and 135 at the high school, that might work, you know? If, if we decide that, I guess that's up for us to decide. But I think that we're going to have to, it shouldn't be fuzzy and up, up for interpretation, that part. You know, we should kind of be clear in the future, as, if we reference in this policy language, that the IEP team has, has final say on, on what they offer, great, and that they have flexibility, great. But in the end, I think we still have to define, for those cases, what it's going to take to make sure you walk out with a BHLs diploma.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Mr. Spitz?
Yes. Just one thing, the, in the introductory paragraph or so of this, there's a reference to, and I quote, prescribed course of study. And I, I would like to see added to that the words for high school graduation.
So I'm sure this is going to cause some. Is that it? Is that it, Mr. Spitz? I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman.
I'm sure this is gonna cause some eye rolls, but I'm just gonna ask the question anyway because I haven't seen, I don't know the answer to this. Is BHF summer school, when it shows on our transcript, is it as an outside summer program? Is that counting against the 40?
No. BHF is not. It's a transcript of BHHS credit. So it actually reads as an outside to external. So any of our students that, like us, from SMMUSD is a Beverly transcript that they receive.
So for all of our students that are taking summer school, it shows up, it does not go against the 40 that are in this board policy?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, one of the things that concerned me is the fact that there's what's not written into that particular policy. And that is that it does not, as I agree with Mr. Mar.
Margot.
Margot, the same thing. I was thinking of somebody by the name of Marco that I know that's. I always get confused. But that's beside the point. I personally think that it's what is omitted that's important. And I think that we need to be, you know that not one size fits all. And to see that wording, that, that it's 40 units, to me is very limiting because it does not include the words, where there's special considerations or IEPs and things like that. So I personally would love to see that there's more flexibility for students with special needs or special circumstances. And when, and of course, you do it by a case-to-case scenario. So I think that that's important, that we do that so that there's some more flexibility written into it. And I'm not quite sure about the ILC situation here. Is that also the, considered part of that?
No, the ILC is not considered part of it. I'm gonna bring this back again. ILC is an extension of BHHS. So BHHS has different pathways of delivering instruction and this is a blended learning. So those students are only off-campus because that's where they're currently housed within that independent study program. And so it's always been a Beverly Hills High School staff member delivering that instruction. This 40 credits is for external. And if you recall, in the policy, it states you have to be an accredited organization outside of BHUSD to ensure that that curriculum too is up to the standards that our curriculum is.
But if they are, then there shouldn't be a limit.
Correct. Credit. Well, if, and by no means. I was working under my first year, under 20 credits. And so I was receiving a lot of requests from families to be able to take external credits. So I brought back.
My question was, when you say accredited, can you define what we see as accredited? Is that WASC A through G? Or is there any other accreditation?
Correct. No, it's, I apologize, I gotta pull it up. So there are accrediting organizations, and there's actually four of them. We happen to live in to the Western States. And so being from Chicago, I actually brought this to your guys' attention because they stated we were limiting the options that our students actually had. We were only saying you could go down the street to Fusion when there are other programs that are aligned with great institutions, Brigham Young University, Harvard Online Learning. And they were a part of the Midwest or the East Coast accredited. And so it's high school and, high school post-secondary option accreditation. And we belong to the Western. And so you'll actually see it in board policy where we state. Well, I'm, sorry. I apologize. I'll read you the actual words. Any other questions while I look? No, it's about accreditation. But we actually had changed the verbiage inside the board, board policy to ensure that we were more inclusive to all options across the United States and not just the specific. But WASC is part of that accreditation. So like BHF summer schools, WASC approved. But there's a larger, and it's national, something, something. I usually am really good at this.
No problem.
But I'll find it, Mr. Margot, and tell you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus, are we any, are we done or?
I think that, I just, that's my concern is that the students with the IEPs and that if it's suggested by the committee of the IEP when they're studying it, that they are not limited to the 40 if the IEP suggests that there should be more. And that, and that's just what I'm concerned about, that, that we don't use 40 as the absolute maximum that they can get.
So I would agree with everything that has been said by Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz, and Mrs. Marcus. I'm not sure Mrs. Walker Schuman had, really, your question was different. But I think it's really important, you know, for the board. The reason I brought this is because we actually made an amendment to that policy. And so the board sets the policy and the administration has to follow that vision through, through the administrative, through their administration of the policy. So the guidelines are set by you, but we set the policy. So I hope that that has provide, this, this discussion has provided clarity as it relates to how we deal with the 40 units and how we should treat students with IEPs different. Based, that, that takes precedence, I think. And so is that clear? And I think you're gonna bring something back or both of you are gonna bring something back to us?
We can bring something back.
There were some recommendations to language, I think, by Mr. Spitz.
Yes. Yeah, no, we'll bring that back. I just want to point out that even though there was a change in, like, the number, even when it was the old policy with 20, it's, it, this, it still remains the same that it would be, you know, up to the IEP team to determine what's best for that student. So even if it was, if it stayed 20 and, you know, the IEP team said that this student needs this curriculum to be delivered in this way, then we would have exceeded the 20. So really, the only thing that's changed is the number.
So I'm glad to hear that.
Already. We have students who have more than the 40 already. But it's very clear that it has to be the IEP team's recommendation. That's the key.
But they should not be limited by the 40 if they want to make the recommendation.
They're not. It's, it's based on the student's needs and the, and the individual needs of the student. The 40 is not the issue. It's whether or not it's appropriate for the student.
Okay.
So can I, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Margot.
Understanding the overall philosophy in this, the impetus in changing the policy last year was to give families a little more flexibility for just general ed students without IEPs and 504s to take some things online. It's, it's, all students, it's the way education is headed. We're a basic aid district. Does it hinder us at all to have kids take more programs in alternative settings? Does it hurt us at all that students do that? Is there any downside to it?
Yep. And so, so I'm gonna answer from a general education standpoint. And my answer is absolutely no. So, and it's, by the way, it's Higher Learning Commission. That is the governing body. And then we are part of WASC, which is the Western Division of the Higher Learning Commission. I'll always remember that for the rest of my life now.
Okay.
But, but my general education answer is no. What I do believe is that, one, from an ed services standpoint, and I believe from an educational leadership standpoint and a Board of Education standpoint, I think that our old brick and mortar concept is antiquated. I think that you alluded to it earlier, Mr. Margot, that I think that we are trying to achieve a global citizen, a global learner. I think that limiting sometimes just what's sitting here on this campus, because we are basic aid, we do have a lot of funding to be able to support the individual student, but only within these four walls. And sometimes that learning needs to extend to SMC, West LA, UCLA, bringing them in on concurrent, in current classes, bringing them on our campus, letting them study abroad for a semester. So creating blended learning opportunities more like the ILC for students to take more classes. You know, we have a lot of Advanced Placement in Honor students that can easily take additional courses, but we are limiting them based off the way that we deliver our bell schedule. So letting them graduate early. Why are we impeding students and stating that you have to be here for four years? What is the arbitrary age of 18? I don't know.
You're speaking my language.
So I think that there's a lot of whys that I still need to answer. You know, I think that we, I'd love to go, continue this journey. And I think that we are moving in that right direction with, you know, utilizing things like Apex Edge Annuity, concurrent enrollment, West LA classes, support from BHF, PTA, PTSA. You know, I think that, that we're moving in the right direction. Project-based learning with our staff as well. We, David delivered a PD on that. I can continue on this. But I, I agree. I think that we need to expand what it is that our students have access to. Yeah. And this policy, again, if you look at it prior to us bringing it to you for that initial revise, it probably hadn't been touched.
That's true.
Like I said, it was still saying correspondence courses at UCLA. You know, and they haven't had that branch in many, many years.
So part B to the question now?
Okay, so part B is.
Good cop, bad cop.
So when it comes to special education, we are in the land of FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. Basic aid is secondary to the federal and state laws that mandate the district's obligation to offer FAP to students. So we are looking at it, as I said earlier, on a case-by-case basis, based on that student's individual profile, their learning style, their learning needs, their, where, where. We have an obligation to say what classes and what setting and what and how, and with what services and supports those classes will be delivered and what setting those classes will be delivered. So it's a different analysis. It's a, it's a, it's a more finite analysis. It's a more concrete analysis that, that the confines of basic ed, basic aid don't really play into. With the IEP team doesn't care how it's funded because if it's funded via basic aid or LCS, LCFF, if the IEP team says this student needs it, district's gotta fund it. One way or the other.
All right, thank you for the input on that.
Mrs. Hacker?
Yes, Mr. Spitz?
You know, I'm under the impression that all school districts have alternatives, such as we're discussing. And to me, the purpose and the care we have to take with this is to not let it get out of hand. That's, I think that's the purpose of being careful about how, how this policy is worth it.
Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I just want to make one little point that sometimes maybe it isn't about where they learn, but what they learn. And I think that we're sort of limiting them being able to learn in other areas where the, it's the least restrictive environment. So I just want to make sure that we don't give way to the where being more important than the what.
Okay, I would agree with that as well. Thank you for the discussion. I think that, I look forward to having staff come back and cleaning this up a little bit for, as Mr. Spitz. And not sure if Mr. Margot, did you actually make a specific recommendation with wording? Or you just?
No, I'll leave it to them. But we just wanted, I think we all covered the fact that we wanted the, the policy to reflect the, what we can infer, but make it clear that it's actually in writing.
Yes, I agree.
Even if it's still the overriding governing, you know, decision body with the IEP team.
Great. Thank you so much for that discussion. We're going to move on. Page. Communication from board members, discussion of social media policies. So I'll start out because I, again, put this on the agenda. If you all recall, back in October, we started, on October 22nd, we had a training, a governance training. And here we go. Let me pass it back down. Yes, yes. And we were, so this is, this, I, I want you to look at, I, I asked Dr. Bregy to, if we can have copies of what, of the work that we started to look at back in October. We were looking at, we discussed the adoption of a governance handbook. And if you, I'd like to bring your attention to the end of page 10. And I also want to pass out for you a CSBA sample for a board policy. Can you pass that down, please? As it relates to social media. Yeah. Yeah. So if you look at the bottom of page 10, and again, this is the handbook that we haven't yet adopted, but we started the work. And I'd like to maybe move at the next meeting to, to finalize this draft and just adopt it. I think we're there. But for the purposes of this conversation, again, if you can turn to page two and go to the bottom, it talks about protocol and electronic communication. Page 10, at the bottom. Protocol and electronic communications and social media. So this is wording that we were looking to, that we discussed in our governance training back in October. And so I think it's important for us to focus, again, to the terms that we had agreed on. And along those, this should be a framework for adopting social media policy for this district. And, you know, I just want to remind everybody, I also pulled three bylaws that govern the board. People often ask me, "Who, who governs the board? Is it Dr. Bregy, your lawyers?" And the answer is, "The board governs the board." So bylaw 9200, "The board is a unit of responsibility over the district and the board members have no individual responsibility." Board policy 9005, "Each individual board member shall understand that authority rests with the board as a whole and not with individuals." And board policy 9271, "The individual board member has no legal authority except when sitting as a board member." "Board members shall present their concerns and concepts through the process of board debate. If in the minority of a decision, they shall abide by and support the majority decision. When in the majority, they shall respect divergent opinions." So I think that when, you know, no one here has said that, that no board member should have access to social media. But I think that when we step outside of the dais and we, we, we are not in an authority of board members in this capacity of being together, we really should remind ourselves of these three board policies that I just identified. And I think as we move forward, and I hope that it would be the hope of the board that we continue our work in adopting policy or framework that will structure discipline and guidelines for any board member now and in the future to follow so that we have a recourse for an understanding how we, we handle ourselves outside, again, of this dais and when we're deliberating on social media. So I'm not sure how you want to do this. I, I thought if you think it's important to go over the, the policy first or maybe even revert and just go over page 11. If, you know, I, I intend to bring some policies back for consideration at the board meeting on the 24th if it is the consensus of the board that we want to continue down this path of adopting policy. I would be interested in learning to see if there's anything else that you all want to cover in that framework before we adopt policy? If there's some, if there's an element that you feel is missing from the board policy that CSBA has provided as a sample? Or if there are particular areas of page 10 and 11 that you would like to see be part of our policy? I think we can give that information to, we can give direction to, to adopt policy with, with that language. So I have my ideas of some, of some areas So, um, I have my ideas of some, of some areas, and I don't know if those could be incorporated, but I'd like to just kinda go around and, and see where your thoughts are, because we haven't, um, we haven't finalized our handbook, so that's, that's, but there's a, a big section of that handbook that it has to do with social media. And then, of course, I'd like to adopt board policy around social media, which doesn't exist right now. Mr. Rick Cooper.
Um, I just have a comment just in general about, I mean, communicating, board members communicating, whether it's events or social media, so I think it just should be under one type of communication discussion. Um, and that's all I really have to say about this topic, so.
Oh.
Um, well, it's, it's, you know, obviously no secret why this has landed in front of us at this time, but I think it's, it's time to address it, because, um, I, I kinda feel that social media is, is lending itself to the downfall of, of mankind. Um, I, I don't, it's like humankind, my apologies. Um, I, I, it has, it has its advantages, you know, if you're looking for a long-lost friend or something, and you happen to go on Facebook, and oh, hey, look at that, they live in Coral Gables, Florida, who knew? But I think that, for the most part, a lot of damages is coming, and, and it, it really is a form, in this position, it has become a form for panic. And I, I, it, it irks me so that it has become a form for panic. The problem is, we have freedom of speech in this country. And, and we cannot, I can't support policy that will censor people. I will support policy that makes positive recommendations on how things, platforms should be used. It's a new, it's a new time. Social media is not going away. We have to adapt to it. But I do believe, I do believe in people's right to speak, but I also believe in recommendations that if you are a sitting elected official, and this goes from here to Washington DC, that you use it responsibly. That's, I think that's the most important thing, is using it responsibly. I think, you know, a lot of us on the board are parents. We promote our children's events, we promote their sporting events, we promote their plays, we do those kind of things, and that's okay. That should be allowed. That's part of, 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 it's marketing and advertising, you know, for, to support programs, and it's, and I support that. Um, we, we could think about establishing separate personal pages from things as board members. We, we could consider doing that as a possibility, when, but you, you know, maybe you don't wanna manage double accounts, you know, that's also not fun to do. Plus, it, it reduces the amount of, of exposure when you're on multiple accounts. So I understand the negatives. But I, I'm, this is, this is more to digest than I can offer back to you right now. I would like to read all this over. This is the first time I've seen the, the draft of the governance handbook and, um, this sample CSBA policy, so I would like to-
I think we, I think it was sent to us while you were president, Mr. Margot. I remember that.
The governance draft?
Yeah.
Really?
And that's where I took it from.
Okay.
So, um, that's okay, it was in October.
Yeah, I never came back to a meeting, though.
We never came back, so it has to come back, I think, if there's more, if there's a board majority that wants to do this.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm interested in, in designing a policy, but I would like time to digest everything.
No, yeah, absolutely. The whole purpose tonight is not to adopt anything. I, I wanted to start the conversation. I wanted you to have the materials that I've passed out. I'm, I'm open, I, I think we, if, if it is the wish of the board that we move forward, then I think there will be an opportunity for us to submit, um, other bylaws, although I think it's very clear, just from the sample of CSBA. And I think the handbook, of course, we paid for that training, and this is what came back. This is the outcome of that training that we had.
Yeah.
So I would hope that we would strongly consider this, because we did have a very robust conversation about some of this framework, so, um, but thank you, Doc. So you would be in agreement of, and, I mean, I kinda heard you just-
Yeah, I'll be in agreement with moving ahead with, with creating some sort of policy for ourselves, because it, it hasn't exist. There's, there's policy that, that dictates communication from board members. So this kinda either should be added to existing policy or create a new policy for it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Margot. Mr. Spitz?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Hacker, I wanna thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's a subject that we do need to delve, delve into. Uh, I don't feel, I don't feel personally, uh, committed to this, to this, uh, draft governance handbook, because I have been excluded from the Board of Trustees on page one. However-
I didn't, I didn't write it, I just printed it.
I didn't write it either.
However, uh, I do, I, I do wanna say that in, in glancing through these, uh, five statements on page 11, and it, it reminded me of the conversation that we had had, and, um, I can say for sure that what I'm, what I'm told is in social media these days is not in accordance with what I read here.
I agree.
For example, it says, "We agree that individual board members will not post individual opinions on district issues." Um, now, maybe that's something we wanna hold to, maybe it's something we don't wanna hold to. But I, I do believe that if, if that's what we're supposed to be doing, we're not doing it now. And, um, so I, I, I think that this is, this is an important issue, and, um, I think it's going to probably involve some kind of a study session.
Yeah, and maybe we should have a, I've been asking for this. I mean, if, if you all believe that we need a study session, or we can ask Jabari, maybe we need to have a conversation meeting around this, so that we actually have, you know, input, and it's a working meeting in progress. I don't know, we, we have to ask, but I, I think you're right. I think this, this will have to ask us, we will have to come back and, and really meet as a board and, and really delve into this. Mrs. Walker Schuman, and Mr. Spitz, go ahead.
Even in the, um, CSB sample on public statements near the bottom of the, of the page.
Page is that, Mr. Spitz?
It's this one page.
Just, oh, the bottom of the CSBA.
The CSB, CSBA sample of public, the bylaws on public statements. It says, "When speaking to community groups, members of the public, or the media, individual board members should recognize that their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board." So, that's, that goes beyond just saying, "This is my view." I mean, it's, board members need to be aware of, of the perception of what, what they're saying. So it's, it's an important topic.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
So I'm sure no one's gonna be shocked to hear that I don't agree. As board members, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution, whose First Amendment guarantees the right to free speech. Any policy that restricts the ability of an individual to communicate outside of hate, speech, or threats is a violation of this right. I've used Facebook since 2008. I also use Instagram, WhatsApp, and Twitter. This is the way communication today is done, for better or worse. It is protected under the First Amendment. What is ironic is that several board members over the last several, well, years that I've been paying attention have used social media to promote their values, beliefs, agendas, and to build support, both personally and professionally. We've seen videos, launch parties, campaign coffees, from current sitting board members, because social media is a powerful tool to communicate, create transparency, and build understanding. It was a cri- a critical modality in introducing myself to community members during my campaign. It was part of the campaign strategy for Mrs. Marcus in 2018, and Mr. Spitz during his campaign in 2015, and for Mr. Spitz as a board member defending his position on Measure Y in 2016. In fact, the first communication I ever had with Mr. Spitz was a conversation on Facebook. It has been used for campaign and personal communication for years by Mr. Margot, and more recently by all of our city council partners, not only in their political campaigns, but to promote personal interests and values. Our teachers' union uses a Facebook group to share info and discuss issues. Our teachers, staff, and admin almost all have personal Facebook profiles to communicate, as do many of our students. Each of our campuses has a social media profile. Even BHHS clubs and teams have social media presence, and yet we're discussing restrictions on what is okay to post, share, and promote. The reason I have, the, the real question I have is, why would someone try to limit the ability for anyone to communicate via social media? You can't claim to value transparency and at the same time limit the modern methods of communication that millions of Americans utilize, thousands in our own community. I understand that this is a powerful tool that allows access to a wide audience. That is its inherent value. Although I can understand why not having reach to that audience would feel limiting. Just because this is a faster method than the practice of writing angry letters to the editor in a prolonged public argument in our local papers, doesn't mean anyone has the right to restrict or legislate free speech. Board policy does not trump law. As one board member, I do not support restriction of any kind. I believe social media usage should continue to be embraced. I will remain accessible and have open communication with the community via social media in a public and transparent manner. And in reference to the CSBA bylaws that have been presented, that Mr. Spitz just mentioned, the statement immediately after the one he read says, "Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such, not as viewpoints of the board." So it seems to me that as long as that is done, then it doesn't actually preclude any board member from sharing their views, opinions, or weighing in on, on anything.
So I'd like to respond to you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Basically, I know, I'm gonna skip you just a little bit, because I'm gonna respond to her, 'cause I disagree with some of the things that she's said. So if we look at the, um, if we, if, first of all, let me, that's why I started the conversation with board policy. Um, 9271, "The individual board member has no legal authority, um, when, except when sitting as a board member. Board members shall present their concerns and concepts through the process of a board debate. If in the minority of any decision, they shall abide and support by the majority's decision. When in the majority, they shall respect divergent opinions." So let me ask you, are you saying that this policy, you're not willing to abide by this policy as a sitting, a sitting member of this board? If we were to adopt policy around social media, that four of us or three of us would agree to? If we were to adopt protocols as established by the handbook, you would not, you're saying publicly that you would not abide by that, and that you would still do what you feel is in your interest, under the law, and that you would not abide by what the, what we have agreed as a body? Are you saying that?
I'm saying that I think it has to be a case-by-case basis, but I'm not going to agree to a blanket censorship that violates the First Amendment.
No one, no one is, I don't think anywhere in here is the word censorship. That's the word that you've chosen to, to use tonight. There's nothing in this language by CSBA. This is put by lawyers that govern boards across and up and down the state of California, not just our board. We're not an exception to CSBA. We take an oath, you've taken the, I think you and I are the only ones who have completed the Board of Governance classes established by CSBA. I think you've been through adequate training, um, that under, that is consistent with board policies that I've just discussed, and also with the CSBA board policy that is being considered or that I brought over to your attention, and the protocols as established by the manual. Are you, I just wanna be clear where you are. I think it's important for this board to understand, if you're not interested in participating and partaking as a member of the majority of this board or a minority, that's fine, I will respect that, but I think for purposes of going forward, we would need to, to know that.
I have no problem with the board bylaws that have been presented.
So that's what we're talking about. So there's, just to be clear, 'cause you used the word censorship, there was no one who used the word censorship. You used that word. No one is saying, I started off by saying, everyone in this board deserves and has the right to use social media. So I made that statement very public, and I will stand by it. What I will not stand by is to have a board member in this, in this dais who refuses to be a board member, and, who, who will not abide by the rules and guidelines that four of us or five of us agree to. I think that seems to be inconsistent with good governance. We are trying to establish a protocol guideline, so that in the future, this board is more functional and not perceived to be dysfunctional in its actions by one board member or by two board members. I'm not interested in what's happened in the past, I'm interested in correcting the future. And I think the five of us can collectively be part of that vision. We've talked about that when we've had our training. I know, Mrs. Walker Schuman, that, that's why you went to CSBA. I think you went there with good, a good understanding of what you were trying to accomplish. I think it's, it sets good leadership. I really applaud you, and I would ask you, just really to consider that there's the reasons for these, for these policies, this is that, so that the board is able to govern itself in a correct manner, in a professional manner, and in a manner which really constitutes respect and the most, the, the, with most integrity. We, we have a commitment. I, I just wanna finish by saying this, and then I'm gonna let Mrs. Marcus speak.
This doesn't feel like a discussion.
Board policy 9005, "The Board of Education believes that its primary responsibility is to act in the best interest of every student in the district. The board also has a major, has major commitments to parents, guardians, and all members of our community, employees, and the state of California laws pertaining to the public education, and established policies of the district. To maximize board effectiveness and public confidence in this district's governance, board members are expected to govern responsibly and to hold themselves to the highest standards of ethical conduct." So I really, I, I don't think that you would negate that, I think you would actually embrace that. And I would hope that, for purposes of continuing to discuss social media, Mrs. Walker Schuman, please understand that nobody's saying that you don't have the rights to, to be part of social media privately, but I don't think that it could be misrepresented or misconstrued that you were speaking on behalf of the board, or as part of an extension of, of a member of this dais.
I don't think anybody has misconstrued that. Uh, and, and just to take this a step further, as you had said, the board is responsible for overseeing and governing the board. This board has many times in the last year violated the Brown Act by its own admission. So to try and hold to a standard in one instance but not another is, is not appropriate. In addition to which, if we're talking about following best practices and good governance as defined by CSBA, let's be consistent in the way that we do that. It can't be applicable to one scenario, because you feel like it, and then not applicable to another.
Well, I'm asking for the board for direction.
When you say that we violated the Brown Act, but specifically, I'm not aware of that.
Do you want me to bring it up, because it was a conversation you and I had?
Yeah, I want you to bring it up.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Sure. So, um, when we were discussing district calendar, you and I had a conversation about how this all came up. And you had expressed to me that you had reached out to Dr. Breggy, and that you had taken notes and had a meeting with him to discuss the district's calendar and how it was put together. And in that meeting, you had said to Dr. Breggy, "This is not the board majority wishes." And I said to you, "Mr. Spitz, how would you know if that's the board majority wishes? We have not had a meeting. We have not had a study session, we have not discussed it."
That's how I knew.
And you said, and you said to me that you had spoken to Mrs. Hacker about it.
That's how I knew.
Hang on, let me finish.
Go ahead.
And I said, "But that's not the board majority, that's only two." And you said, "Well, I also spoke to Mrs. Marcus." And I said to you in that moment, "Mr. Spitz, that's a violation of the Brown Act. As a board, we had not had the opportunity to sit and have a discussion about the calendar yet." So that's just one example. I can continue, but I don't think it's really helpful.
Well, I think you should.
I think you're doing a great job, you should continue.
I don't think this is helpful to the conversation. You asked for an example, I gave you an example, but if we're gonna hold ourselves to a standard, let's be consistent.
Okay, so I'm looking for direction from the majority of the board. It sounds like Mrs. Walker Schuman's not interested, so let's move on.
That is not what I said. Do not misrepresent my words. I said I am fine with the board bylaws. I said I'm fine with the board bylaws. The board bylaws don't say anything about not speaking, about district issues on personal social media. What it says is that it has to be identified that there are personal viewpoints and not the viewpoint of the board.
So I would say that we can get into the specifics. I'd like to, if people are going to use social media to have questions, I think, and if they use acronyms that are associated with any of our schools or district platform, there should be a disclaimer that says, "This is not an official website or, um, platform, um, and it's, it's not an extension of BHUSD." It has, there has to be a disclaimer. I'm not sure how it works, I, I would like that to be part of it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not referencing that to you specifically, but that is going to be something that I am going to be asking for.
So as long as that exists, you're fine with it?
No, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, Mrs. Marcus?
Uh, I'd like to take a little different viewpoint on this whole thing. First of all, Mrs. Walker Schuman, you mentioned that I use social media, and I'd like to know when since the election you've ever seen me use social media?
I have screenshots, if you'd like me to share them. I can put my-
Have screenshots of me now on social media? I don't even go on Facebook.
Things that have been shared, that you've been tagged in, events that you've gone to that are district events.
But that doesn't mean that I get it. I have never, I don't even open it. I have no idea.
I'm not saying that you have. I, the conversation-
I'm just trying to tell you that I am not a social media. The only reason that I was on social media at the time of the election was because everybody told me I had to be on it, and it was handled by, not me, but by my daughter and so on and so forth, 'cause I don't even know how to do social media.
I completely agree, it's a very powerful tool.
So if people are tagging me on something, it's not something that I have written in or said anything about, because I have not.
Totally agree.
I can assure you, so you can say that for that.
Sure.
But I would like to mention something that I think is hurting us. And that is the fact that, talking of social media, somebody sent me an email, and that's an email now, about something that was said between, and it was written by a lady who I understand was probably your sister. That's what I read, that's what they said, so I'm just, I don't even want to.
Okay.
And it, and I don't wanna go into it, but after I read it, I was very upset by it, because I felt it hurt the board. I'm not gonna go into the discussion of what it was or anything like that. And what I am trying to say right now is that I believe that this type of thing is hurting us as board members. And I, I'm not denying you your right to use social media for what you wanna use it for, and how you wanna address things and, and give whatever. I just think that when something is so harmful, that it affects all of us, and it affects me, because people come to me and say, "What's this all about?" And I really don't have anything, I don't even wanna get- And I really don't have anything, I don't even want to get involved in it.
Totally understand. The unfortunate part of that is that when it's brought to public, that's what happens.
Well, that's the point.
That's what happens. So public and social media are two totally different things.
I didn't have anything to say with it. I'm just saying that the optics of it are hurting the board. That's my honest opinion. That's the way I feel, and I feel that I, I just, I wish it wouldn't happen. That's the only thing.
So I, I just have a quick question at this point. Are we, are we going to have an opportunity for board comments separately from the discussion for social media? Because I have additional comments in that regard.
But that's the only, I mean, that's...
So I, I'd like to first finish the business that we are here to do. I'd like to have, Mr. Spit, Mr. Margot, if I understand you, I have direction for you to come back with the adoption of maybe the handbook. You're going to review it.
I've had some time sitting here, listening to all this, so I wanted to continue my comment, if I may, as I've sat quietly for a little bit. I reviewed this policy, this stand, this CSBA policy, and I think, I think we can all actually, from what I'm hearing, agree on this. I don't think there's anything in this, and it's what I said upfront. It does not restrict the right to free speech, and it makes clear recommendations in the last section on the first page, specifically where it says, "In addition, the board encourages members," note the word "encourages," "who participate on social networking sites, blogs, and other discussions, or informational sites, to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and professional manner, and to model good behavior for district students and the community." None of us are going to disagree with that. I don't think any of us are going to disagree with that. The problem with what's happening here is we're taking, things get, things are getting personal. These are not board issues. Things are getting personal between board members in the community, between board members and other board members, and we have to separate that out of this venue. This is not the venue to discuss these things.
I'm sorry, Mr. Margot. I have not been personal. I have stuck...
No, 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 I'm not accusing you of anything.
So I don't know what you're saying for the members.
This is not addressed, this is not addressed at you. This is addressed at the situations that have occurred over social media, over WhatsApp, over Facebook. And this happens, also it happens, you can catch city council members discussing things with community members on Facebook. It happens all the time. This is not, I'm not talking about anything here. I'm saying that the, the, the issues that brought us to this place today were personal issues between people, members of the community, that are all working to serve the community and tried, and try to help our district. I want people to keep that in mind because...
So point of order, Mr. Margot, I think, I just want to point out that we started this work in October 22nd of 2019. We didn't continue the work. So this was not something that just happened today. This is, I'm trying to finish what you started in October.
And I agree, and I've said, "This sample of bylaws is something I could subscribe to." That's what I'm saying. I've, I've looked over it, and I think it doesn't restrict free speech at all. It makes strong recommendations on how sitting board members should conduct themselves. And I agree with those recommendations. So, so if you, if we want to bring something back to the board as a first reading, I would start with this right here. Slap our name on it. We don't need to hire an attorney. Bring it back, and then we can discuss it. And that will expedite getting something on the books as far as board policy.
I would like, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Marcus, I think we were on you. Were you finished with your comments?
I, I, I just, I want it, I just don't want anything that's going to be hurting us on social media.
There is something on page 11 that I want to bring everyone's attention to, something on the Protocol Handbook, number three, under page 11. "We agree that when selected personnel, personnel campaigns and posturing are over, and individual board members will not disparage board decisions, actions, or each other." So, you know, look, everyone has a, a freedom to, to practice and to be part a, of social media. Since I've taken the board, I'll tell you, I turned off my, my Facebook, and I don't need more attention to my life or to, or to my family than I already have. And so I, I maintain a level of privacy when it comes to social media. That's my wish. But just to reiterate some of the points that were made earlier, I, I understood that elections were over. I understand that, and personal campaigning and posturing were over, and so there was no need for me to continue. We have hired, we made an extensive investment in this district, the five of us, to have a social, a public, a public media person. And for me, I think that as long as the messaging is positive and it informs people of things going on in the district, that is good money being spent for a good purpose. And I don't need to get involved, or none of us should get involved with, with messaging or sending mixed messages, and I think the messaging is enough. In fact, sometimes we're blamed for having too much communication coming from the district. But number four, it also says that "We agree that individual board members will not post individual opinions on district issues. We agree to speak with one voice through the district, district's official messaging, so that we send our community clear message on the priorities and progress of the district." And five, "We hold this agreement at our highest board priority to assure that the community is aware that we are cohesive, a cohesive board, and that we, we are trusted to put our goals, our priorities, and our children above personal ambitions and political positions." And so I think there's tremendous value in adopting the handbook, not just the policy. And, you know, if we ever get out of, out of touch with what we've adopted, we can revert and point to this so that we are able to best govern ourselves as a, as a board. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is bigger than just the five of us. It's about the future of Beverly Hills Unified and School Boards. Thank you. So at this point, if I understand correctly, we're going to come, Mrs. Walker Schuman, do you have something else you wanted to say? You said you had other comments?
I have other comments when we go around for board comments in the horseshoe.
Okay, great. Thank you. Dr. Bregge, so we have direction to come back at the next board meeting on the 24th to adopt policy and to also agendize the adoption of the Beverly Hills Unified's with different, District Governance Handbook.
If I could just jump in.
Yes, please.
So I think that, I think the handbook needs a little work. So because, because I want some people to take a look at it. It's been a while, so I'll, I'll resend that out. But let's, I think that's a study session issue, but, but I will make sure that the policy's on there.
Great. We're going to move on to communication from board members.
All right. On Friday, April 3rd, from 3:30 to 5:30 PM at Roxbury Park, there will be a By Your Side event. By Your Side is a club at the high school, and we're actually moving to implement it more in the middle school. I think there already is a club at the middle school. But there's an event, By Your Side Club is it, is where students from the high school meet with students with physical or mental disabilities, and we have lunch with them every Wednesday. So this event is a Citric, a citrus packing house in central California that the club president, Madison Heller, she worked there last summer, and she's teaming up, or the citrus packing house is teaming up with By Your Side to have a fun afternoon at the park with games, karaoke activities, and fresh fruit to sample. This event is in celebration of a new Sesame Street character, Julia. That is the blurb I have from the event. Beverly Vista Middle School Winter Band Concert is after spring break, Thursday, March 26th, at 6:30 PM in the BV auditorium. The ASB Spring Blood Drive at the high school is on Thursday, March 26th. If you'd like to sign up, please contact me through my board email or any other method that you can reach me. And, let's see, lastly, this year's musical is Chicago, beginning on Friday, March 27th, at 7:00 PM. All the participants in the play are very excited to work in, at the Savant Theater. I mean, it's very professional, and they get kind of a Broadway feeling, I guess. And I hope everyone has a restful and healthy spring break.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Just quickly, a happy Purim to those who are celebrating, and wash your hands. And everything he just said is, of course, subject to that fecal coronavirus.
Mr. Spitz?
I pass.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
The job of a governing body is to deliberate, share viewpoints, hopefully build consensus, but overall to build community confidence. We are all seasoned adults, some of us more seasoned than others. And while we may have differing views on myriad issues, we also vote together far more regularly than we do otherwise. Each of us is accountable for our own viewpoint, and the role of an elected community representative requires us to advocate for the things we believe in. Sometimes that puts us on opposite sides of an argument, but being the professional people that we are, we make our case, we vote, and we move on. That is the way the work of the board is efficiently done. We leave our issues at the dais or in the boardroom. We've heard for years, this community plead for functionality from this body, to bring focus on business of the district, not personal clashes. We've heard it for years from our city partners, and we've heard it from our staff. While I appreciate the support from all corners of our community in the wake of last board meeting's performances, I want to be clear that my viewpoints are not personal. My viewpoints and my priorities reflect my values and my opinion. They are not in support or in opposition to any person. So let's reframe the way we look at the work that we do. A disagreement about an issue is not an attack on a person. It's a, it's reasonable to defend a position, but unnecessary and downright damaging to create drama by attacking a person. We may agree, we may disagree, but we will move on because our responsibility above all is to do the work of the district and build community confidence. And I would hope that each board member here would agree that encouraging targeted, personal, public verbal assault is not a responsible way to function as a board. I don't presume that my positions are always right or always the majority positions, and I consistently advocate for stakeholder input, whether it's about the calendar, or summer programming, or any other issue. We all stand by, ready to hear from our community, whether one-on-one, in public comment, or via an email to the whole board. Over the last year, there were two occasions when I said something that didn't sit right with a few teachers in our schools. They reached out to me. They explained their positions. We had meetings and really comprehensive dialogue, and we resolved the misunderstandings. This practice, set by our wonderful teachers, who are remarkable role models, should be regular practice in our community. So I ask that as we move forward, in the event that I say something that doesn't sit right with any member of the public, a parent, staff member, or a community partner, rather than perpetuating division by a public ambush, please give me the courtesy of a phone call, email, or text, and a conversation to resolve any perceived offense. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Pass.
Okay, so I have some announcements. May I borrow your agenda? I think I put mine away. Oh, here it is. So Career Day is tomorrow. Mr. Margot, where are you going to be? Because I'm interested in going to your, could you please enlighten this?
I will, I'll send you the...
You're going to be the architect tomorrow?
I'm all over. I'm in three different rooms, back and forth, but I'll send you the information.
Okay, thank you. He's going to be a speaker tomorrow, and he's going to talk about the blueprints of Beverly Hills High School, or is it the entire district?
Uh, the high school.
The high school. So if you want to see how that has evolved to where we're at, I think it should be very interesting. Do you have an extra hour for that, or?
Take around as long as they want me.
No, I think that should be very interesting. Thank you for doing that. So Career Day tomorrow, very exciting. Future board meetings. We have a regular board meeting next, Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, of course, 2020, 5:00 PM here. We have another regular board meeting on Tuesday, April 14th, and we also have that study session on May 19th, and I can't remember the, the time.
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00. Thank you for that. And, what's that?
Ms. Chisholm.
Oh, Mrs. Chisholm.